Okay, seeing that we have a quorum of the town council. Members present, I call the meeting of the town council to order at 6:30. While we originally had one councillor requesting to attend via remote participation because of the snow in Boston, she is with us tonight instead. So, we will not have remote participation. I'm going to go over a few announcements and then describe some changes in the order of our agenda. First of all, the statement of interest to the Municipal School Building Authority. Many of you have been participating in the listening sessions. There have been four. I will say that councillor attendance at those listening sessions has been outstanding, and I want to thank you all for the efforts you've made to be there. There are two more, one on Wednesday, March 6th, from 4:00 to 6:00, at Crocker Farm Elementary School, and Wednesday, March 6th, 7:00 to 9:00, at Amherst Regional High School. We also then invite any and all of you to join us for the public forum on the proposed town budget, which is on Thursday, March 7th, at 6:30 at Amherst Regional Middle School. And before we go on to the next item, I just want to mention it's been a very busy weekend in Amherst. We had excellent support from our police and fire departments, as well as those of cooperating towns and the Massachusetts State Police. They all made a significant contribution through the coordinated response, ensuring the safety of all of our residents during the celebratory events of our students. But at the same time, we recognize the rapid and thorough response of our DPW, and especially the Water Department, to the unexpected loss of water resulting in the loss of water pressure. The water is safe to drink, but we continue to ask you to be conservative in your use while we wait the changes that have to be made and the repairs. Mr. Bachman has requested that I recognize him so that he can introduce the members of the Resident Advisory Committee.
Thank you, President Griesmer. We have two of our three members of the Resident Advisory Committee who are here tonight that I wanted to ask them to come up, so you can see them. And there are two familiar faces and one new face, and unfortunately, our third person isn't able to be here tonight because she's working. Sometimes people have different work hours. So, the person who isn't here unfortunately is Keisha Dennis. And Ms. Dennis came here as a student, and then stayed and continued living in town, and has had children, has been working in the town, has not been involved in town government before, unlike our two experienced people here, but has had a lot of experience with nonprofits. Also, we have Connie Kruger, who everybody knows, was a former member of the Select Board, extensive experience in town government, including an employee, then as a member of the Town Meeting, Select Board, Board of Assessors, Planning Board, Downtown Parking Working Group, and she was the governor's appointee to the Amherst Housing Authority. And Jim Pistrang, who is the, everybody knows, our former town moderator. He's also served in multiple capacities in town government, including as a Town Meeting member, Town Manager Search Committee, the Dog Park Task Force, the Town Meeting Electronic Voting Committee, and the Puffers Pond 2020 Committee. And I really appreciate all three of these people for stepping up, being willing to participate and serve on the Resident Advisory Committee. As you know, the Resident Advisory Committee doesn't have a lot of form to it in the charter, so I'm really going to be depending on these people to help develop what this committee's role is, and what they, and how best the town manager in the future and current can use the Resident Advisory Committee to help ensure that the best people and the most diverse group of people are appointed during the appointment process. So, I thank you for taking them out of order. One of our members has an important thing to take care of, so.
Okay. Would either of you like to make a comment?[295.83][295.83](Laughter). You know, like it's good to be here, you know?
Jim and I were just saying in the back of the room, it's our first council meeting, so I'm really pleased to be here, and I'm honored to be invited to be part of the Resident Advisory Committee. It's a little free-form, as many things are as we're inventing, but I'm hoping that my experience and thoughts and whatever knowledge of the community can be helpful to the manager and to the town, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it unfolds.
Okay.
I'll say something too. Thanks to the town manager for appointing me. I'm looking forward to working with him, and looking forward to the other committee members, and I'm committed to reaching out and getting a diverse selection of our town, and inclusionary selection of our town, involved in the town. So, this is a great platform to be working to do that.
We want to thank both of you and your missing member, and look forward to seeing how you figure it out, okay? So, you may have noticed, the agenda has had some revisions, and I'm just going to ask both the audience, the people at home, and especially the councillors, to just hang with me, because we had no fewer than nine of 11 items changed today at different points. So, it's been a little bit of a who's on first. So, first of all, we are going to take proclamations and commemorations out of order and do those first, since there are a number of people in the audience who are here for that purpose. Then we will follow with public comment, and after that, you may have noticed that we were planning tonight to have the Town Meeting Advisory Committee present their proposal, and they have asked for a delay in that. We have agreed to that delay, to a future meeting yet to be determined. But I do want to mention that already posted for the purposes of this meeting were various items, and the council did have access to the proposal provided by TMAC, but it was not posted publicly. We will do so and make sure that TMAC has plenty of time in advance of when we will be hearing that, talking with them. And then finally, we are going to do one other flip, and this one, Margaret, even you don't know about, and that is, at the request of Doug Slaughter, we're actually going to take the Board of License Commissioners first, and then Transportation, okay? So, the first item under Proclamations and Commemorations is the Tibetan Day proclamation, and would those of you that are speaking, please come forward. Please identify yourself, and then proceed to tell us about your proclamation. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. This is the first time, as members of the Regional Tibetan Association, we are coming before the Town Council, and so we want to congratulate you and wish you the best. This is the first time, I think, with the new form of government, we're here to request the continuation of the proclamation on Tibet. My name is Thondup Siring. I'm the president of the Regional Tibetan Association.
And my name is Nima Dolma. I am the vice president of the Regional Tibetan Association of Massachusetts.
And I am Sotram Kunseng, and I'm the secretary of the Tibetan Association of Massachusetts.
So, on March 10th, 2019, Tibetans throughout the world will gather to commemorate the 60th anniversary of the Tibetan National Uprising against the brutal occupation of Tibet, and to pay tribute to more than 1 million Tibetans who have died in their struggle for freedom of Tibet. The Regional Tibetan Association of Massachusetts Amherst will hold a flag-raising ceremony and a Walk for Tibet from Amherst to North Hampton to mark this important anniversary. Sixty years ago, on this fateful day, when the Tibetan people, for the first time, learned about the Chinese army's plan to abduct His Holiness the Dalai Lama, over 100,000 Tibetans surrounded his summer palace to prevent His Holiness the Dalai Lama's abduction. Tension began to build up, and on March 17th, 1959, His Holiness the Dalai Lama fled Tibet and sought refuge in India. When the Chinese army learned about his escape, a full-scale attack on the capital city took place, shelling the summer palace. So, during the invasion, over 1.2 million Tibetans lost their life, and 98% of Buddhist monasteries, which were the centers of Tibetan culture and learning, were systematically destroyed. This year also marks the 11th anniversary of the 2008 series of large-scale peaceful protest campaigns throughout Tibet, which were ruthlessly suppressed by Chinese forces. According to the U.S. Department of State, "The Government of People's Republic of China is engaged in the severe repression of Tibet's unique religious, cultural, and linguistic heritage, and is engaged in gross violation of human rights in Tibet, including extrajudicial detention, disappearances, and torture." According to the 2018 Freedom House Report, Tibet is the second least free country in the world, next only to Syria. "To all freedom-loving people in the world, we ask you to stand on the side of the history, lend your voice to end genocide in Tibet, and support the Tibetan people's movement for the right to live in their own country free of oppression and discrimination. To peacefully resolve the issue of Tibet, and to bring about stability and coexistence between the Tibetan and Chinese people, based on equality and mutual cooperation, His Holiness the Dalai Lama proposed the middleway approach, which was adopted democratically by the central Tibetan administration and the Tibetan people. On behalf of the members of the Regional Tibetan Association of Massachusetts, I would like to invite members of the Town Council to join us, either for the flag-raising ceremony in Amherst, or the walk from Amherst to North Hampton. Thank you, and I yield my time to Nima Dolma."
And I would like to highlight on the successful passage of the Reciprocal Access to Tibet Act passed into law last year on December 19th. This bill was introduced and sponsored by Congressman Jim McGovern. This really sends a direct message to the Chinese officials of their unfair and discriminatory policies against all Americans, diplomats, journalists, and Tibetan-Americans, especially traveling to Tibet but have no equal access, whereas the Chinese citizens who come to the United States, they travel across throughout the country freely, without any restrictions. So, we are looking forward to your continued support in making sure now this bill that has come into law is being implemented and holding China accountable for its actions. Thank you.
I just want to, like, you know, do my thank you note. On behalf of the Regional Tibetan Association of Massachusetts, I would like to extend my gratitude to the members of the Town Council for giving us the opportunity to come to this meeting today. I also want to thank you for the favorable consideration to declare and observe Tibet Day on March 10th in solidarity of Tibetans all over the world, including a flag-raising ceremony here. I also want to thank the town for other arrangements, including the sound systems to be used on that day. Thank you again.
Okay. Does the council have any questions at this time? If not, I'd like to hear a motion to adopt the Tibet Day 2019 proclamation. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Alyssa, I didn't see your hand.
Thank you. It's quite minor, and luckily, since only one person signs now on our behalf, we don't have to worry about perfecting it before we all sign it. But it just, it has Walk for Tibet bolded, and there's no reason for that. So, if we could just fix that before you sign it, that's helpful. And for those fellow town councillors that are unfamiliar with this, we have been doing this for several years at the Select Board level, and we appreciate people bringing this forward as part of our Tibetan community, so thank you.
We also really appreciated the wonderful ceremony you had to honor Jim McGovern for his work on your behalf. That was very nice. Thank you. All right. Any other comments? All right. Do I hear a motion to adopt the Tibet Day 2019 proclamation as presented? Pat is the motion and the second. Dorothy?
Yes, second.
Any further comment? All those in favor, please raise your right hand, or left hand, it doesn't matter.[932.43][932.43](Laughter). Okay. I think that was unanimous.
I'm abstaining.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have one abstention. Were there any noes? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here. And for councillors who would like to join me, the ceremony is at 10 o'clock on the steps of Town Hall this coming Sunday, and as we did in a previous event, I would ask that you join me, where each of us read a piece of the proclamation, okay? The next is the resolution in support of changing the Massachusetts state flag and seal. Who is here to speak on behalf of that? Please come forward. Please, please sit down, identify yourself, and speak to the motion, or speak to the resolution.
My name is Elaine Kenseth. I have lived in Amherst for 73 years. Thank you. My name is Elaine Kenseth. I've lived in Amherst for 73 years, since I was four. I would urge the Town Council to join other towns in Western Massachusetts in support of changing the Massachusetts and state flag and seal. I never paid attention to the flag, and I never paid attention to the seal, but it's, it has been sponsored, the resolution has been, come up in the state legislature for many, many years by Byron Rushing, who's not in the legislature anymore. But we have to thank Joe Comerford, our state senator, for raising this resolution in the state senate, and also, let's see, Lindsay Sabasa from North Hampton, who is the, who's leading this in the House. So, Western Mass is well represented. I believe that Hadley also supported this resolution. What's, to me outrageous, as I learned about this, the seal and the flag, is that the motto for our state is "By the sword we seek peace." I think that a lot of things that have happened in Massachusetts would, we would deserve to have a better motto than something like that, because we have many other kinds of initiatives that are not "by the sword," that we seek peace otherwise, and we deserve to be represented well by what's on our state seal and flag. The native person is not representative of the Wampanoag tribes, or the New England tribes, from Chippewa, which is further west from here. And the sword over the head of a native person is itself, to me, quite outrageous. It's a reproduction of the Miles Standish sword, and it's just the whole picture. I think we deserve better, and as I'm taking that from my heart. I'm not a politician. I advocate for a lot of things in town. We've worked mostly with refugees and with other peoples who are marginalized, and I just think we can do better. And I know Hadley has voted, and I think Orange last year voted for this resolution, and it would be really wonderful if the state legislature, the state senate, could hear from the people of this, this town and the towns around to make a major change. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the council? Mandy Jo.
I just had a housekeeping. The last "be it further resolved" has a spelling error, so if that could just be corrected, assuming this passes, you know, before it's signed.
In resolved.
In resolved.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Alyssa?
So, resolutions and proclamations are always super interesting. Because of my experience, of course, I'm comfortable with the ones I've done before, so I'm comfortable with Black History Month, I'm comfortable with Tibet Day, et cetera. But we've often run into ones where we personally may feel very strongly about a particular issue, but we don't feel like we've necessarily heard about it from a number of people in our community. And so, it's a little unclear sometimes whether it's necessary to have it be a Town Council action, just as we usually, we used to discuss at the Town Meeting level, or is it necessarily to have it be a Town Meeting action, versus a nice-to-do, versus encouraging hundreds of our friends and neighbors to write their own separate letters into the legislature, because sometimes the legislature has said, you know, what they really want is a stack of emails, or a stack of letters from individuals rather than from a council. So, I'd like to hear from my fellow councillors if we just feel strongly enough about this as individuals, which I certainly am, am not disagreeing with anything that's been said here, or if we think it's necessary to do this, appropriate to do this as a council.
Comments or questions? Pat?
I feel strongly that we need to do this. I feel that white America has to take responsibility for what we've done and how we've created this country, and I think we need to really take honest and deep looks at ourselves, and this is one way of doing that, and that's saying it is no longer acceptable to use images of genocide as our flag.
Dorsey?
I would agree with Pat that this is, this is definitely an appropriate thing for the Town Council to make a statement on, and we saw in our packet that there are a number of other local communities that have done the same thing. Our state rep and our state senator have supported this bill, and it seems like fantastic thing, very positive thing for the Town Council to do at this time.
Other questions or comments? Just George.
Serving 12 years on Town Meeting, these sorts of resolutions that were presented were always a challenge for me, because often I was being basically asked for my own personal opinion, and no one in my, well, actually, one person in my district has actually spoken to me about this, and that's because I announced it at the district meeting and asked people if they had any opinion. There were 70 people present. This one person came up and spoke to me briefly. I'm uncomfortable voting for something like this, because I haven't heard from my constituents, and I suppose I'm supposed to represent them. So, I'm going to abstain. I'm not going to vote against it. The sentiment, I have some sympathy for. Some of the history here that's in the whereas is, I have a lot of issues with, but the basic sentiment I agree with. But as an individual, I have my own views, but as a councillor, I feel like I'm supposed to represent my constituents, and I haven't heard from them really at all. So, in this case, I'm going to abstain.
Other comments? I know. Other comments from council?
I have a question.
Yes, Dorothy?
This resolution says that if it's passed, that a committee of Massachusetts legislators will sit down with some native people, native leaders from Massachusetts, and design a new flag. Does that flag then come back to us to, okay?
I don't know that we have an answer to that question. Certainly, we're...
Thank you very much. My name's David Duttold. I'm from Montague, where I've served on Town Meeting now since 2006. And to answer the councillor's question through the chair, the resolution would support the passage of the bills that are in the House and Senate, sponsored by Joe Comerford in the Senate, and Lindsay Sabadosa in the House. If those bills pass, a special commission would be established to include five legislators, five, we call them native leaders, because they certainly will be leaders, who will be representing the various native nations of the Commonwealth, certainly, some of which are state-recognized, some of which are federally recognized, and some of them, like the Massachusetts tribe themselves, whose name we have appropriated, are neither federal nor state-recognized nations, yet they are very much among the people who now live in the Commonwealth, and they would also, we hope, have a seat on that commission, which would be chaired by the Commissioner on Indian Affairs, and which would include no less than three statewide arts organization representatives, a representative of the State Historic Commission, a representative of the Secretary of State, who holds the seal, and two unaffiliated individuals who will be chosen by the governor. It will be the special commission's task to come up with the new design, but it will change if the current flag, which, it might be illustrative if the council would allow just to take a look at the flag, which is just to your immediate left, Madam Chair, to see what exactly the image is we're talking about, but that image will change if the, if the two bill, if the bill passes. And what we are asking the council to do tonight, as in North Hampton on Thursday, and Greenfield is about to schedule a hearing as well, is to support that effort, as your senator and representative have already done. So, the design work would be left to the special commission, the heavy lifting will be left to the legislature, but it is, I think, every town's right to say, this particular flag, which sits on our stage furloughed, and which sits on the stage of every elementary school and high school in the Commonwealth, where our third graders study the state flags and images in third grade as part of the core curriculum, thereby receiving this image of violence between the white hand holding the sword above the head of the native man, okay? That's not necessarily something that we wish to continue perpetrating on our very, very young children. It's not just harmful to native children, it's harmful to all children to absorb these images of white supremacy. It is really only Massachusetts and Mississippi where this debate continues. Mississippi with the stars and bars, Massachusetts with the colonial broadsword over the native man. So, we hear your concerns that you haven't heard from your constituents, and we would welcome, speaking for myself, and I'm not a member of your, your town, I'm not a resident of your town, but those of us who are working on this statewide effort would welcome a public hearing if you wish to go that route, where we could invite all your residents of all backgrounds to come make comment, and perhaps to take a look at the flag for the first time. It is stamped on the front cover of every voter guide that goes out for every referendum, every election. It is stamped on the side doors of every state patrol car, and it is on every piece of stationery. So, it's subtle in some ways, you might not recognize it at first, but if you take a look at it, it's nakedly clear what it represents. And I did the research in the state archives and the special collections room, and I can stand by every comment in the whereas clauses. I can give you the documentation for it.
Thank you. Are there other comments by the council? Are there other comments by the council? Then I think at this point, we, I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution in support of changing the Commonwealth flag and seal of Massachusetts as presented. Is there a person making that motion? Dorothy, a second? Shalini, any further conversation? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to the resolution in support of First Congregational Church of Amherst, United Church of Christ, continuing to serve as a temporary shelter, and I'm calling on Reverend Vicki Kemper.
Good evening. It is an honor to sit before you all for the first time. And with me here, there are two other church members and church officers.
Mary Lou Sullivan, I'm the moderator of the church.
My name is Ralph Falkingham. I'm one of the church trustees.
So as most of you know, I think Lucio Perez has been in sanctuary at First Church Amherst since October 2017. You may not realize that since before that time, before Lucio actually came and took residence in the church, we have been in consultation with town officials, the building commissioner, the fire chief, the health department, even the police chief, to make sure that we were going through the proper procedures and providing a safe space for Mr. Perez to be in our church. And the way the state building codes work, we have also had to go before the state building code appeals board. We did that for the first time last January. They granted us a nine-month variance as a temporary shelter. When we went back to them last July, they told us that we were no longer a temporary shelter, that we were a permanent shelter, and therefore we would have to make significant renovations to our building to meet code that is required for permanent shelter. And so we have responded to them and will be going before the board again this Thursday. We are requesting a continuation of the original variance they gave us for another nine months because we have no intention of becoming a permanent shelter for Mr. Perez. His home is in Springfield with his family, and as soon as he is able to safely return to them, he will do that. And it is very important to us to continue to be safe and to meet any building code and health inspections that are required of us, but we would prefer not to spend $75,000 to qualify as a permanent shelter that we don't want to be. And that's the long and short of it.
Okay. Any other comments from the other people? Okay. Questions or comments from the council? Shalini?
So are there any concerns for the coming nine months or so to safeguard this person's safety or health, or does anything need to be done to, you know, to maintain the conditions that are being required?
So when we originally went before the state building code appeals board and were supported by town officials of Amherst in our request for a variance, we were granted that variance, and so we understood that to mean that they understood that we had provided safe conditions for Mr. Perez to live there temporarily. And now those conditions have not changed, and yet because there's a higher bar for temporary shelters, they're wanting us to make significant renovations, for example, providing a private bathroom with a handicapped accessible shower, providing some, tearing down some walls and providing further fire prevention protection. And again, the actual safety of the residents of the room he's living in has not changed at all, it's just their classification of the shelter.
Are there other questions? Yes, Mindy Jo.
What was the variance that you were granted and are continuing to seek?
We requested a variance to operate as a temporary shelter, and that's the variance we're continuing to seek. We're seeking it for nine additional months. This is what we requested last July, and were denied that request, and were given until a couple of, a few weeks ago to submit plans to meet their requirements as a permanent We are also arguing before the board that we believe that our provision of sanctuary to Mr. Perez is part of our constitutionally protected freedom of religion, because it is part of our religious mission.
Alyssa?
So I wonder if we, through you, Lynn, we could ask the town manager if staff has in fact expressed any concerns about continuing to do this, because as far as we've been presented, we, it's only been one individual, just as it had been originally. I understand the state likes to turn temporary into permanent, but this is not, as I, as I have been familiar with it in the past and also with our seasonal shelter, is that always has to get variances of various kinds too. And we are not attempting to provide shelter for numerous people at numerous stages of sanctuary. We are just trying to do one thing again, but I know it says here, conditional on the approval of the Town of Amherst authorities, but I just wanted to check in to see if there had been any concerns expressed.
Mr. Bachman?
Thank you. So when this first came up, the building commissioner actually went to Boston and testified in favor of this. From the town's point of view, this is not health or safety issue. The church has accommodated every request that the town has made from the health department, from the building department, and from the fire chief. In fact, the fire chief and the building commissioner and I have all written letters to the appeals board recommending that they continue with the existing situation instead of changing the situation. So, but it really is up to them. I believe that we're prepared to support it as much as we can, because from the town's inspector's point of view, it, all the health and life and safety things are in compliance.
Thank you. Evan?
This, excuse me, this isn't a question so much as just a comment for the council and to better contextualize this debate, but I do believe that our representative, who is in the room tonight, has sponsored legislation to the Massachusetts Legislature to ensure that people who are seeking sanctuary and houses of worship will remain to be seen as state, as temporary residents with regard to building code. So perhaps this will be the last time that we have to do something like this.
Representative Dom, would you like to speak to that? Please stand.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, if you didn't, I was going to.
Good evening, everybody. This is my first time in the room with the renovations, and I'm very excited to see everyone. And I'm really so pleased to be here, to be able to listen to what's happening in this discussion and to support First Church. I have introduced legislation that would, in fact, as Councilmember Ross says, view people who are in houses of worship sinking sanctuary to avoid deportation as temporary residents for the purposes of the building code. This is not only to protect the church in our community and Lucio's sanctuary in our community, but if, if allowed to be viewed as permanent residents, and then to have the subsequent extremely high prohibitive expense that might be incurred, it could be viewed as also a disincentive to other houses of worship to provide sanctuary. And so I was moved to do this in speaking with the church and also because of the statewide implication for this. Quite frankly, I think residents of sanctuary should be viewed as temporary, just as the occupant of the White House should be viewed as temporary. I don't speak for the church in that.
Thank you, Mindy. Are there other questions or comments? Yes, Andy?
Just a few things. One is that when the Select Board approved the sanctuary provisions that we had enacted sub-after-Town-Meeting action, I spoke very personally and strongly about why Amherst needs to take a strong stance. And as I've told Reverend Kemper before, I've been particularly proud of having a church in our community that has put itself into this wholeheartedly as it has. The only reservation that I would have at all is that I'm a little bit wary of having the council urge executive action on some types of subjects, but I think that this one is very appropriate. I think that the resolution is well-worded, and so I will be pleased to vote yes.
Pat?
I want to say that the sanctuary at First Church is supported by hundreds of people, people of faith, atheists, agnostics. It is gay straight. We're, we're there because it's important to us to protect the people in our community. And I think you're doing an incredible job. Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions? Okay, then, do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution in support of the First Congregational Church in Amherst, United Church of Christ, request to maintain a temporary shelter as presented?
So moved.
Andy, so moved, second? Any further questions? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much for your good work.
Thank you very much.
All right. We're going to move to general public comment at this time. May I see a show of hands of people who would like to speak, excuse me, about an issue that is not on the agenda later, and specifically Agenda 5A or the transportation update? Mr. Cusner?
Is this on? Thank you, Madam President. As I communicated to the President of the council earlier, there were a couple of items in addition to the items she just mentioned that I wanted to bring to your attention, although my comments may or may not be related to that, depending on what happens under that item. I'm here at this part of the meeting to ask this legislature to act on a number of items that are effectively executive items, but that were brought to the executive by the previous legislature known as Town Meeting. And interestingly enough, our local newspaper in an editorial this past week addressed one of them. I was surprised to see that, but one of the items that I believe is still an outstanding item is the appropriation of a modest amount of funds towards human services. And I imagine many of you read the bulletin, and I hope you've seen that, and I know that there are people who had worked with me on the Select Board years ago on this issue, and also have worked for decades on the, on Town Meeting to ensure that some funding for human services remains part of the town's budget. So whether or not this legislature passes resolutions on items that are asking the executive to carry out the acts of previous legislatures, I seriously hope it will, in that matter and also in matters that'll come up further tonight. I was going to make one other comment, but given that the time is short, I think I'll just hold it and look forward to talking with you a little bit later. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to presentations and discussion. Mr. Bachman, you are going to introduce the Board of Licensed Commissioners.
Thank you. So as you recall, the Board of Licensed Commissioners was appointed and confirmed by the council a few weeks ago, and they have met a couple times. They've been busy at work, and I think there are three, four of us here, four of them here today. And I'd like, just want you to make sure that you know who they are, if they would like to come up and sort of introduce themselves.
Please come forward.
Doug Slaughter?
Marion Walker?
Paul Masquer.
Gaston de los Reyes.
And I understand you've met a couple times, Mr. Bachman, further comment?
Yeah, so I would like them, to thank them for coming in. They got off to a quick start. They elected Mr. Slaughter to serve as their chair, and I think it was important for them to, this is a commission that was created by the charter and to take over a lot of the responsibilities that had previously been held by the Select Board. And so they have been busy looking at the tasks in front of them, doing some actual approving of one-day liquor licenses, and getting to know each other, in fact, so.
Other comments from the members of the commission?
I have a few things. I don't know if any of my colleagues do or not. Just to reiterate, yes, we've met a couple of times. We've, at present, decided on the second and fourth Mondays at 2:00 is our meeting time. We found that interfered least or less with holidays than first and third. But, so we've, we've got a regular meeting time. To date, we've, we've dealt with short-term liquor licenses, but it's also the first form we've been reviewing. There's some ideas, you know, you get into these and look at the forms again for the first time, for some of these folks, not so much for me, but, but there are some things about them that you, that beg a lot of questions, and some of which is just climbing the learning curve on what is allowed or not allowed by state law, but also some of the intentions behind what is on our particular forms. For example, there's a recommendation for use of paper cups, actually a requirement for use of paper cups, and not bottles and cans, so puts plastic in a bit of a no-man's land. So some of those kinds of things, we are sort of rediscovering and looking back at policy, if it exists, certainly getting familiar with and reviewing appropriate state law. But there are other areas besides just liquor that we want to take an interest in, a view of. There's some new things in front of the legislature relative to short-term stay facilities, I guess is one way to phrase it, you know, an Airbnb type of facilities and what is allowable by us. There's some existing state law around Sunday alcohol service that we may look into a little bit, and what we'll probably do on some of those types of things will be to review those in particular, see what we think meshes well or doesn't, from the lens of the Board of Licensed Commissioner, write a memo to you guys to take under consideration, because oftentimes it would require action by the, by the council. So there's a few of those kind of things. We're going to start, fortunately, we're not in the renewal season, that happens later in the year, so we have the opportunity to sort of deal with those things that are most immediate to us, which are the short-term licenses, and then we'll work our way through other licenses and review the forms that we have, the intention behind them, and make sure that we create a clear and coherent picture for both the applicants and for the public at large, and try to preserve and protect the, the safety and use by both public at large, and give our businesses a clearer, you know, opportunity to perform what service they want to perform.
Other members?
Sure. Hi. It's a pleasure to join a new commission with a fresh mandate. Right away, we got to licenses that needed attending to, and so in some ways, we got right into work, and I look forward to having the chance as a commission and also with feedback from the town council to think about the policy questions that go into the engagement between people in town requesting licenses and when and when they shouldn't be approved, and other ways that we can enhance the business and community environment in Amherst.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, it's been an exciting couple of meetings. I've been learning a lot. It's also been great to work with the fellow commission members and with Mr. Bachman. I also wanted to acknowledge the staff, Rob Mara, the building commissioner, and Jennifer Moisten, and Stephen McCarthy. It's been excellent, we've received excellent support from them.
Thank you.
I'll just add to what's been said by saying it's been interesting work. Our first few meetings, I'm not trying to call them exciting, I think that will happen when dispensaries or renewals or new licenses come up. There'll be plenty of excitement for everybody.
Are there questions from the council? Andy?
Yeah, I guess this won't surprise Mr. Slaughter when I bring up the topic, but one of the things that happened with the Select Board when it was the licensing body was that through two of our members being part of the campus and community coalition to address problems of high-risk drinking, which is a cooperative arrangement between us and the university, it sensitized two of the five to a serious problem and gave us a linkage to the people at the university who've been working very hard on that subject. us a linkage to the people at the university who've been working very hard on that subject. And I don't know if you've given any consideration to whether you want to, or think it appropriate to have a linkage to the campus and community coalition. But I just did want to sort of acknowledge the importance that I felt that we had to that linkage and sensitization that it gave to us.
If I may. It's ironic you bring this up because literally last week, after our meeting, it was, the manager swung by to see how the meeting went. And it had crossed my mind the day before exactly that, whether or not a member of the Licensed Commission should or shouldn't potentially serve as, as a liaison to the campus and community coalition. I've not yet brought that up to my colleagues, and we'll probably put it on this week's agenda. But nonetheless, I think that it's important that one or maybe more of the counselors also serve in that role. But I think it would be beneficial to have someone from our, our commission on that, because we do deal in the more pretty day-to-day functional sort of aspects. And there are things we can put in and communicate to those who seek licenses or that sort of thing that can be helpful to the, to the whole process, I think. So it has crossed our mind, and hopefully we'll be able to participate.
Okay. Other questions?
Will this commission, I can't tell if this is, okay. Will this commission deal with marijuana licenses?
Well, perhaps. I think that's one of those topics that we have to bring up, you know, as to whether we should have a local license for marijuana, what that should look like. That would then probably come back to you guys in the form of a memo. It's like, here's what we think. We've thought about this a lot. That is definitely, you know, an area that we'll definitely have to take up in some form or another, and then make a recommendation to the council as to what, what we think would be a good idea for the town to do. You know, sort of quick, back the envelope would be, yeah, I think it's a smart idea. But there's a lot of things that have to be considered. So that's a personal opinion, by the way, not a word.
Other questions? Yes.
So I'm as new as you guys are, so forgive me if this is an obvious question, but is there, is there a process on the website for people to just go and know, you know, if they're starting a business, like, these are the licenses, this is the process we need to follow?
I would say there is to some extent. I think we'll probably rework that pretty considerably over the next few months, because that'll be part of what we do, because it's shifting. Because before it was, oh, you apply to the Select Board for this, or that, or the, so as those things change and reshape relative to our function and relative to those things that go directly to the manager or whatever, we'll, we'll sort those out and obviously keep the website up to date as we, as we work through that. So I think that that was a long-winded way of saying yes.
So speaking. Speaking as a former Licensed Commissioner who has a lot of opinions about how the Licensed Commission worked and how it didn't, and how it should work in the future, which I really appreciate Doug being willing to still take my calls associated with that. And so now you're on the spot. Now you really have to, or I'll squeal to them that you haven't. So one of the things that is going to be interesting as this unfolds is that you notice how carefully he phrased, we would discuss it a lot and send you a memo, but it may or may not be something we actually get to decide about as a Town Council. So there are some things we may get to decide about, and I would argue that most things we will not. And so it may be something that if a particular area is of particular interest to you to follow what they're doing on their webpages. And when it comes to, for example, one of the things that I fought really hard for during the whole marijuana legislation situation was to have the possibility of a local licensing process, completely separate from what happens with inspections and CBA. I didn't know what it would look like, but I wanted to make sure we would have the option. So we have the option legally, we just don't know what it looks like yet. But it will be up to them. It will not be up to this body. And I really appreciated something that was said earlier by the Licensed Commission, associated, and in fact, phrased better than I'm going to, about the, one of the things that the Select Board did as the elected at-large body is we tried to balance safety and economic development. And in fact, the ABCC makes it really hard to say no to anybody. I mean, even if you think, I don't know if these people know what they're doing, it's actually pretty hard to say no. They're, you can actually get rejected for saying no by the ABCC. You cannot, for example, say, that liquor store would be too close to that liquor store. It would hurt the liquor store that we've all loved going to for 30 years, so you can't have that. That's not a good enough excuse for the ABCC. So sometimes it may seem like their hands are tied, and that's because they are. But we also appreciated that, for example, being very transparent, as Shalini pointed out, when one of the few policies we did have written down was one, a license did become available because somebody gave theirs up, is to have a very transparent process so that everybody knew that one had been given up, rather than it was first come, first served kind of situation. So I really appreciate that they'll be able to focus on that in a way that was separate from the Select Board being able to do that. And so it's lucky that the Town Council doesn't have to do these things. But at the same time, they're not elected to talk about economic development and safety. They're appointed to talk about that. So we'll be sending some of our constituents off to them, to talk to them about those issues, because they won't necessarily be coming to us, or we'll be referring questions to them. So thank you very much for all you're doing to try and figure this out moving forward.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Doug?
I just want to add one other thing, and this gets into the sort of mechanics of the process. There are certain things that require a public hearing, capital P, capital H. And like I noted earlier, we're currently scheduling ourselves to the second and fourth Mondays at two o'clock in the afternoon. That's not necessarily the optimum time for public input. So it's entirely likely when we go to a public hearing circumstance, we may pick a different time. If we take up particularly, I don't want to say controversial necessarily, but issues of high public interest, we'll probably, you know, likely try to be fairly transparent about that and try to have meetings that are opportunities for the public to come and talk to us in regard to those topics and express their opinions so we can get a full gathering of ideas from people at different times of day. So we'll try to be cognizant of that. If we are not getting that done, I certainly hope to hear from any of the counselors that feel like they're not seeing that kind of participatory process, because we do want to give everybody a chance. Especially, there's a lot of complex and, and high-interest things that we, as a License Board, need to take under our purview and to review, both because we're new and also because there are new things that are coming out through state law. So we have to, both of those sort of coming forward to us. And so we want to do that in a way that allows the community to kind of express their opinion and get a good sense of the community and shape our policies and bring things to you as necessary and give you the opportunity to make good decisions.
We want to thank you all for joining us in this adventure of creating new bodies with new jobs. And we look forward to hearing from you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug, you're just going to remain?
I'm going to stay.
Thank you. One of the other responsibilities that Doug has continued on behalf of us, the town of Amherst, is that of transportation, continuing to represent us with the PVTA and so forth. And so we've asked him to talk about the issue of transportation and particularly from his perspective, both regionally and within the town. Doug?
Thank you. Excuse me. So again, I'll paint a little bit of a picture relative to PVTA, just to sort of give you a sense of how it functions, primarily around how it acquires the money that it gets in order to do the work that it does for us, and then how we fit within that structure. So the PVTA is the Regional Transit Authority. What's the, that's the TA part of PVTA. Separate from the MBTA, which is its own entity, separate from the regional ones, it is the largest of the, of the Regional Transit Authorities. Second largest is the one in Worcester. The PVTA receives money from the federal government, the state government, and from the local communities that participate within its, its area of operation. And because of all of those funding sources, there are constraints placed on it about how it does some of its business. So for example, when you take federal money and you make changes to the things that you offer, you have to do, if you make significant changes to things, you have to make, you have to have a public hearing process relative to major impacts, disproportionate impact, and disparate impact. The way to think of those two is, one is about a race/ethnicity question, one more about an economic question. And so if you have, you know, changes to routes that are significant, or proposed changes to routes that are significant, you're required to have a public hearing process to go through that and, and receive feedback from the community relative to those changes. Additionally, a large chunk of revenue for the, for the PVTA comes from the state. And in particular, there's a, there's a line item in the budget, the governor's budget, and then subsequent, you know, he sort of sets the bar in, in January when he proposes, he, in this case, because we have a male governor. But when the governor sets the budget, that's, that starts the conversation. The difficulty of the last couple of years relative to the governor's budget, and therefore the conversations that happened all through the spring and summer, is that he, the proposed funding for regional transit authorities was decided less than what had been promised in a piece of legislation from, let's say, fiscal 2014. So in that, either 14 or 15, there was a large transportation bill. It, it changed the funding to a more forward funding. In other words, they were going to appropriate money to be used in the fiscal year, which was a good thing. But it also, that legislation promised a certain regular increase to funding for the regional transit authorities. And so the regional transit authorities went out and added service, went through a hearing process to say, well, what, what service do we need? What's, what's going to work for us? They went through a whole process to do that addition of service. They went and negotiated new contracts. Most of them have, you know, contracts like we have in the town of about a three or four-year period of time. They negotiated those contracts with their drivers for certain pay increases in their schedule of salaries. And for the first two years, the governor met the recommendations of that legislation. And in the last two years, he has not. He's held, he's held that number steady. Now, last year, through the work of the legislature, they appropriated an additional chunk of money, but it was contingent upon signing an agreement with Massot, with the Department of Transportation. And so it was contingent money. Fortunately for the PVTA, they were able to secure a fair number of funds from that. And so the reductions in service relative to that level funding from the previous fiscal year were much, much, much less than, than had been anticipated. And so I was disappointed to find out when the, when the governor released the budget this year that he basically level funded again, which, as we find out when we talk about schools and we talk about other things, if you level fund, it's essentially a cut because there are increases built in. Cost of fuel is different, labor costs are different, et cetera. All that being said, one of the other complications that the PVTA runs into as it puts its budget together is that by law, we're required to have a balanced budget, voted and approved by July 1. And as we know, the legislature isn't always done with the budget by July 1. So that puts them in a bind. But the other piece of the puzzle is that if, if that budget is projected to have shortfall, and therefore there's a reduction in service that needs to occur, that, that gets into the process of evaluating whether there's a disproportionate or disparate impact on the ridership. There's a public hearing process that happens. Those things take a fair amount of time, because once you have those hearings, then you're required to then go back and essentially employ mitigating strategies. And that's part of the requirement of the federal monies to do that. And so from the standpoint of, you need a budget voted for July 1, you have to have a hearing process that is then fully, you know, and they need to go to all the communities. So that hearing process alone takes three or four weeks to do, get feedback, process that information, potentially make alterations to the budget. And then the advisory board, which I've been sitting on the last several years, has then has to vote that budget. Have to approve the changes to the routes and the service. Always fixed route, we always think about that, but there's ADA ridership and all that. So it's a fairly complex process and a fairly long lead time. So the other thing that sort of plays into this is when you want to change service, particularly fixed route service, the, the decisions have to be made fairly early in order for the process with the drivers to, to, to be, I don't want to say this. Can I back up and say this differently? The drivers, by virtue of their contract, based on seniority, get to pick their routes. That process happens, so the changes happen for us in our area, the northern half of the thing. Those changes happen basically at the end of August, beginning of September. The routes get picked by drivers end of July. So you have to have the routes decided by kind of the middle of July or earlier, partly so that they can print the schedules that go with, you know, the online part's easy, but the printing of actual schedules has to happen. The drivers have to bid their routes. So if I'm a driver with a lot of seniority, I get to pick my favorite routes. Somebody with less seniority doesn't pick their favorite routes. So there's this huge series of timelines that have to be met relative to budget changes. And that's a struggle PVTA's been under over the last couple of years by virtue of funding that's been either not proposed or in a contingent sort of modality, which is where it is this year as well. So that's part of the difficulty you run into. And anytime we propose locally to do something, to change a route, some of those same sorts of pieces about disparate impact, disproportionate impact factor in as well. One of the concerns, you know, Town Meeting, I want to say last spring, had appropriated an additional $53,000 in anticipation of trying to support the routes in that regard. One of the difficulties, and we spoke at length to the, to the administrator of PVTA about sort of what possibilities are there. And so one of the things, and I'm going to try to find my actual email here, but one of the things that they, that they wrote, and I'll just quote from an email that she wrote, is, "The anxiety is twofold. Concerned from, from the passenger's perspective and apprehension for the political ramifications created by increasing services on some routes and not others is, is one piece." And so we don't want to create what she terms as, as false hope. And that is, in other words, to put service in place and then to take it back a few months later is, is very deleterious to the, to the building a trust with your ridership. So it makes it very, very difficult. And so we have to be very conscientious of that if we offer to support additional routes. So in years past, we've, we have done that. We have, we've outright funded routes as a town. So it's possible to do that. The, in that circumstance, we had a contract with the PVTA to offer that route. And so at the time, under the former government, we had, and it's still true today, the town manager was able to enter into a contract and therefore guarantee a service, just like any other, like a labor contract or anything else. And so while that commits the town to certain spending, it's, it's, it is a negotiated contract, and so it's a known amount. And so that is an option relative to one of the things we can do relative to providing additional support for route service in, in town. However, if we don't do that, in other words, if we just want to offer additional funding to PVTA to support routes, the trepidation on their part is often around, well, will there be continuing funding in subsequent years? As a council, you can only vote a given budget. And this is part of how the PVTA's in a bind to begin with, because the legislature passed, you know, essentially a resolution four years ago that said this would be the increase to, to funding. Subsequent legislatures cannot be bound by that. So there's no guarantee you will get that. So that's the same concern that PVTA would have relative to us taking on any additional support to them is, can you or will you, and what guarantees can you provide relative to that additional sources of funds? So if we were to enter into a contract for a specific service, that's a different circumstance than if we are trying to augment existing routes. And so that's, that's, you know, so things, needless to say, for all of those words, things get complicated quickly, is the short story. And it's not that we don't want to support, you know, transportation in our community. We're very, very strong supporters of it. I saw a recent proposal to augment some routes in, in and around the campus. A couple of things, the 30 and the 31 were mentioned in particular. The questions that I would raise, not to say I like or dislike it, I haven't looked at it closely enough to answer that question or to offer any suggestion relative to that, but some of the questions are, I don't falls in, I don't think it falls into a category of creating a problem relative to the, called Title VI analysis, which is the disparate and disproportionate impact. I don't think it crosses those thresholds. However, I do think we want to look at, in the whole of transportation, because that funding's coming from our Transportation Enterprise Fund, in our whole of, looking at the whole of transportation, is this money well spent? In other words, how many, what's the rider's In other words, how many, what's the ridership of that particular component of that particular set of routes? My understanding anecdotally from having conversations with the folks at UMass a few months ago, so this may not be as true today, I have not had a recent conversation with them, the reduction in service on those 30 and 31 routes were not ones they had heard a lot about relative to some others. That may have changed in the meantime. I don't want to characterize it as something other than what I, you know, what I knew. So I think that the idea that was put forward around 30 and 31 is an interesting one. I think it's worth looking into. But I do think we should take it in context of how does this fit into our whole transportation program? In other words, would our chunk of money be better spent for another bike rack of short-term bike rental? Would that be a better, higher leverage use of those dollars or not? I think those are just things to consider. I will be, the PBT meets later this month, I'll be reaching out to the folks at PBT about ridership numbers on those particular routes just to get you guys some more information relative to those particular suggestions. And then we can, you know, sort of have that more in-depth conversation about is that the best way to leverage the money? Is that going to have the most impact that we want? Is that something that we want to, you know, look at a more contractual arrangement which guarantees support for it? And if that can be done, I don't even know at this point. There's one other point I wanted to make. Let's see if I can remember what it was. One other thing. Now I'm not remembering.
We'll just pause and see. Let's pause and see if we have questions.
Sure.
Pat.
Yes, I'm wondering if the 31 bus goes to the Survival Center, I believe? Is that accurate? And if it does, bike share is not going to help with that route. So, because it's costly for some people and so I'm curious.
So I will answer that question in just a moment because I'm actually going to look up the PBT bus site because I don't recall right off the top of my head. I want to say it might.
That's bus 33.
33 goes there. I think 31 is just, 31. Actually, 31 goes all the way to Cliffside if you fund it all the way. I mean, if it, and it's full edition, but I don't know if there's a stop. I'm not seeing the actual stop on Sun 'n' Road, whether or not it stops. I think it might.
Are there other questions? Yes, Evan.
So I'm just trying to wrap my head around all of this. You've mentioned federal, state, and local funding, but the five colleges also contribute, correct?
That's part of the local.
That's part of the local. I'm sure this is more technical than you can discuss right now, but is there some, how does their contribution calculated very generally?
Yeah, I'll actually paint, and I wanted to do that, maybe that was the other point I was going to make about sort of the local assessment, sort of what we're charged. So if you were to go and look at the Department of Local Services, they have the, you know, estimates of the cherry sheet. You shouldn't look at our estimated cherry sheet for transportation because it is incorrect. They took our exact number from last year and doubled it. So I think they either got information incorrectly from PBT or someone at the DLS just didn't type it in right. Because if you look at any other communities within the PBT area, their assessments are flat. So what happens is, is our assessment that we pay to PBT is held on the cherry sheet. And essentially what it is, is that the cherry sheet holds revenue and assessments of things we owe, that the state just sort of takes care of before they actually send us a check of money. So that assessment, however, when you look at that for us, is the entirety of what happens within our community. Once that happens, we will be assessed that full amount. And our full assessment for transportation relative to the, you know, PBT is over $1 million. The amount we as a town pay is far, far less because we have arrangements and agreements with both Five Colleges, Inc. and the university, not the transit service part of the university, but the actual university itself, that lays out how that gets divvied up. It's basically driven by whether a route is wholly theirs, meaning the universities or the five colleges, or if it's a shared route and there's estimates made about ridership and then it's divvied up that way. Our actual assessment in total, before it gets sliced that way, our assessment in total is based upon the number of miles driven within our community. And so when PBT works through its numbers, the amount that it assesses all the municipalities combined can only go up by two and a half percent. That is fixed by state law, Chapter 168, if I remember correctly. So that goes up two and a half percent. But then they take that number and then they slice it based on how many miles are driven in your community. So in communities that have, say, a construction project one year that increases the mileage to a particular route that's very busy, their assessment can go up quite a bit in a year like that because their mileage went way up. So that can happen to us, but in general, our assessment will go up about two and a half percent because the mileage doesn't change a lot. There are variances relative to construction and that sort of thing. I know Hadley's changed pretty significantly when the bridge on, let's say, 47 was not able to take the bus. That changed their assessment pretty considerably because the routes were changed considerably around that. But the long story short is that our assessed amount that you would see currently shows $2 million and something which is absolutely not correct, if you were to go to the DLS website. But our assessment is then sliced between us and UMass and Five Colleges, Inc. And we actually pay a fairly modest percentage of that. Of course, I can't remember what we paid last year, but it's a few hundred thousand dollars, a couple hundred thousand maybe for our piece out of the million, something like that. So a fairly modest amount. But, you know, it's a pretty modest amount for the amount of service we as a community get.
Shalini.
So one of the things that I'd heard during my campaign in South Amherst was the bus routes getting dropped out during summertime. So I was wondering if that happens throughout town or is it, you know, certain routes that get knocked out? And then what is the criteria for deciding which routes get dropped out? And I think I heard you say you're going to work on it, but I don't know if right now there's a process to determine or criteria to determine which routes.
So they typically, I mean, in a university town, as we all know, summer rolls around, we're a lot smaller than we are during this time of year. And as a result of that, the ridership is less and so that they have traditionally and always had decidedly reduced schedules during those time periods. Now, there's certain routes that don't run at all during school vacations and summer and that sort of thing because there just aren't riders to ride them. And some of those routes are funded by, there are some routes that are wholly funded by Five Colleges, Inc. or the university in total. For most routes, there is a reduction in service over the course of summer and it's, you know, the PBT regularly looks at their ridership and looks at whether or not they need to adjust routes relative to ridership. Sometimes that's driven by funding questions. So when, over the last couple of years, when the PBT had to go through the process of reviewing their routes and that sort of thing, how they were choosing to make cuts was to impact the fewest number of riders as possible. But also, you know, those that fall on vacation times for schools tend to be priority targets because they carry so few riders. It's not to say it's not incredibly difficult for those who do need those. You know, they certainly, you know, and you get less of that in, say, the southern tier, which is your Chicopee, Holyoke, Springfield area. They get a lot less of that changes to the schedule during, you know, sort of summer and spring break and that sort of thing. There are a few routes, though, that go to like Westphal State, Springfield Technical Community College that have some altered schedules in the summertime. But they do look at that. They have an operations person that's looking at those kinds of things all the time. But that's part of, you know, part of what came out of the last couple of years of the state budget was a task force on which the PBT administrator served along with about a dozen other folks to look at, you know, what are the right performance measures? How do those regional transit authorities do their work and decide which routes and how they go about doing their business? Now, PBT being as large as it is, has always done that kind of analysis. Some of the smaller ones, you know, you get to Franklin County or Berkshire or some of those that are much, much smaller, you know, they don't have the resources, but they also, you know, may not have the time, you know, that resource as well as the financial resource to do some of that kind of analysis. And so that's some of the push, I think, from sort of the, I think, and I'm presuming this, but my guess is from the governor's point of view is that we need to take a different approach to this as a whole, which is part of why they formed a task force. Let's look at transportation in a much different way. It's been a bit, you know, from an advisory board standpoint, it's been a bit draconian. But at the same time, I understand the need to go in and do that kind of analysis and what's the smart way to spend our money on transportation. There are a few things that have come out of the task force relative to, and this was a point that our, the PBT administrator made, is that one of the critical pieces that came out of the task force materials that they put forward was to a change in mindset between an infrastructure related to vehicles and more about moving people. So getting away from sort of a car, you know, truck viewpoint of the infrastructure and the transportation system to one of a more holistic one that involves potentially even walking, but certainly rail, bicycle, public transportation, private transportation, all of those things. So that little shift is an important one. Now, whether it'll have a material effect insofar as budgeting is concerned, I don't know yet. The other thing I wanted to mention was that tomorrow, and unfortunately I will not be able to go, there is going to be a luncheon with legislators and regional transit authority advisory board members and administrators tomorrow in Boston where they're going to talk about the current budget situation. So I think it's an opportunity for those regional transit authorities to talk about the sort of pain that they will suffer as a result of not getting supported or what their concerns are about, you know, having money tied with, you know, having strings attached, as it were, which is kind of how it's been the last year or two relative to, oh, you can get an additional $3 million or, you know, X million, you know, number of dollars, but you have to perform this, 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 and this. You know, they can express those concerns. The difficulty that PBT itself has as far as the staff of PBT, they cannot lobby the legislature. That's not allowed. Advisory board members can, and obviously we can. Ms. Thomas is still here, or I would say, hopefully she's going to the meeting tomorrow. I cannot make it. I went last year. But I think that it is critical for communities outside of the sort of 495, outside the MBTA sort of service area to try to collectively impress upon those that are inside that area that it's a valuable investment to support regional transit authorities.
Dorothy, you had a question.
This is just to suggest that the way to evaluate a bus route is not by seeing how many people it affects because if you keep cutting it, then people don't even use it in the first place and it just is in a death spiral, which I think it is. Is there any group that is connecting, doing a survey of jobs that might, for example, the buses that are cut off at nine o'clock in the summer? So if you had a job and you were using them to get home, you have to quit the job if you can't find a ride. Is there any group that is doing an economic analysis of employees who have jobs that get out at certain times and then check the pool of people that might actually have those jobs to see if there were a stable bus service, that they would use it?
So I would have to say that I maybe oversimplified the, you know, ridership is a factor. It's not the only factor that they look at when doing those analysis. For example, last year, one of the suggested changes to bus routes was when the last bus went in and around the Holyoke Mall at Ingleside. And the conversation, some of the feedback that they got through the public hearing process from the management of the mall was to say, we have people who cannot get home and so we will have to close the mall an hour earlier if you have the bus stop an hour earlier. And so there, those kinds of factors, you know, they don't always know that at the beginning of that process and that's part of why there is a public hearing process so they can see and hear about those kinds of things because they're subtleties. You know, and certainly advisory board members have talked to the, and expressed opinion to the, to the operations people, have you reached out to some of the larger employers in like the Springfield area? Do you want a sponsor bus? Because you have a number of people who ride to get to work. Certainly, you know, with the MGM casino being open, they actually just bought some Loop, a thing they call the Loop, a service in and around the downtown Springfield area to get people to their casino. But it has the ancillary effect of getting the workers to the casino or other places in downtown. So those economic impacts are important ones that are evaluated, they're sometimes tricky to do evaluate, but that's certainly, the public hearing process helps with that because people can come say, I can't get to work. People make decisions about where to live based on a reliability of service. And I think that's one of the things that's been difficult for me as advisory board member is, you know, the current administration in the State House, in the governor's mansion has had strong pushes for things that are in the economic development realm and the housing realm. And I think the third latest tool is the transportation realm. And I think that's potentially why they're looking at it the way they are, but I think that's a third piece of people can't get to and from work. It doesn't matter if the jobs exist or not, they can't get there.
Kathy, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was going to build, I think, on what Dorothy was asking about the specific bus routes we're talking about. So my understanding is it's, the issues are evening hours and then also summer hours. And I don't have any ability to say how many people might be affected, but I know when I was campaigning, several people mentioned they could no longer get to work in the morning and they weren't using their car. You know, it was a single car family, so it was now more car dependent. So I think one of the things Amherst has been looking at is sort of sustainability in terms of less reliance on cars if possible. So there's a larger issue with these bus routes of if we could sustain service, more people would ride them and be less car dependent. So I don't, you said ride share versus buses. I guess I like to think of them together because, you know, you don't necessarily get on a bike at seven in the morning when you're coming home at eight o'clock at night and ride a bike, you know? So it's like, it's doing this. So what I don't know is what would be the cost to us, say we wanted to commit, agree on, you don't want to reopen a route or reopen hours if next year it's going to be cut. So if we said we could do this this year, next year, and, you know, we'd look at what those budgets are, the way we do some other capital spending, would that, how much would it take to secure keeping some of these routes open? And is there a way of assessing, is that worth it?
So there is, there are ways to assess that. And they have staff that, you know, there's the cost to just run the routes. And in some ways, the local UMass Transit Service, which is independent, but not wholly independent of the university, but it is independent, a provider of service to the PBT, can give some estimates of what some of those things cost. There are some additional costs from an administrative standpoint. The ability to ask the questions and say, well, you know, what's the ridership like? What's the cost associated with this, that sort of thing? That is, you know, part of what their operations people do. The struggle they're in at the moment is that they're looking for a new person in that role. So that limits their ability to do. It's not that they don't want to or can't. They kind of can't because they don't have a person in place yet, I don't believe. I've not heard an announcement relative to that. So they've had a little turnover in that role and responsibility. But certainly that, looking at those factors and sort of, you know, what's the ridership like, are, and, you know, and again, through feedback from the public hearing process over the last couple of years, they know as people have come forward and said, hey, this impacts me financially because I can't get to my work or, you know, we're going to have to explore other options relative to this. That has been recorded duly noted, you know, and factored in as best they can when they think about strategies of mitigation and analysis. And what's interesting to see is, you know, sort of from a purely abstract point of view is what is initially proposed, over the last two years, they've had to make considerable number of cuts. And so what's initially proposed versus what ends up being the actual things that happen? And there's a pretty significant difference between those two pieces by virtue of the fact that they get feedback from the public at large and they want to hear from people. The hard part for the folks at PBT is their hands are a bit tied, so they come to the meeting and get not yelled at, but... to the meeting and get not yelled at, but people are less than happy with them, and it's really not their fault. It's just a, it's an artifact of, of the fact that, that the money is, doesn't exist. And so they're then having to make the best of a bunch of bad choices, and they're trying to find out what the least unpleasant ones are for all involved. And, and, you know, the, 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 the problems those kinds of reductions in service cause are real for people. You know, if you've bought a home, rented an apartment, now you have a lease, you've gotten a job, whatever those kinds of things are, there are real and significant impacts when the bus service no longer serves you in a way that it did, that made it possible. So it's, they, they are cognizant of and, and trying to be appreciative of those kinds of things and, and certainly trying to keep track of, of various impacts as they look at those things.
We, we could get an estimate on if, if we were willing to say we're, do a sequential year, they could give us an estimate.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was looking back before the meeting tonight, I was looking a little bit at some of the changes that were originally post-proposed last spring, most of which didn't go into effect. But, you know, the, one of the metrics was number of bus trips, trips affected. And so I was looking at, actually on the 30 and 31, the sort of, it was nights and weekends, sort of late night and weekend, and it was like 9,000 trips. You think, wow, that's a lot of riders, you know? It's not 9,000 people, you know, but when you look at, say, the same route where there was a reduction between 35 minutes between buses and an hour between buses, that impacted like 150,000 trips. So the, it's sometimes hard to understand the numbers, and I, but I think we can get those kind of numbers, and I think that's valuable, very, very valuable piece of information as we, as we look at what are some options, how I, we want to support this in a way that's different and distinct from our just base assessment.
Arthur, any other, yes, Alyssa.
So appreciating all of my former colleagues' work on this over the years, but even prior to when he was on the select board, it's, I don't want to depress anybody, but it's nowhere near that simple. We've tried having this conversation before where we said, okay, we know of four people who absolutely can't get to work, so what would it cost to run that bus for those four people? Because that's really important to us, that we run it like an extra hour, or we run it longer into the summer, or however we do that. And it's been nearly impossible to get those numbers, no matter who's staffing what, from PVTA in the past. So it's really hard for them to take it down to that granular level. So I don't deny that it would be marvelous idea, but it, the reason it hasn't been done is because we haven't been able to get it done before, even with all the discussion each year about potential cuts, well, what would it cost? Well, then what would happen? It seems like you ought to just be able to get kind of a per writer thing and say, well, that'll cost us this much to do this, and it'll cost us that much to do that. But it never seems to be quite that simple. So that's why it hasn't ever been brought to us that way. So maybe as that group, as the various groups keep working on, how do we pull this apart? Is there a better way to do that so that AMERST could say, yes, we want to invest X amount more into buses, and we just haven't been able to figure out a way to give that money to make that work?
Right. And I, I think that, I think assessing those numbers is a little more available than it has been in the past. I think they have had to do it, for one thing, more often, and I think therefore they've invested in some software tools to do that a little more often than they've had to in the past. So I think that's changed a little bit, so it's a little bit easier. At the same time, it's one of those things where, you know, you sort of change something here and it changes these other four things. It's a bit of a guess. It's, it, you know, it's very broad and round numbers. So, you know, it, it's sometimes, you want to keep in mind that it's one of those things you want to keep monitoring after the fact, because it, it will change the dynamics of people's circumstances and, and, and choices people make about which bus to ride will change significantly depending on availability. But, you know, reliability is a really key piece for people, especially around the economic aspect. It's also, you know, even for students, I mean, if you talk to people at five colleges, you know, they're like, we need to be able to get people, we don't, we don't want the bus to stop seven times between, you know, UMass and Smith, because somebody can't get on the bus, get to a class and get back in time. Although i- if there's too many stops, they end up missing too many, it, it, it impacts their schedule in a way that they can't even take the class at another college in the five colleges, because the, the time involved in the transportation is just too great. So they, they like those express routes and they fund them. But, you know, any changes to, to those, have those kind of alternate effects on, on, on ridership and availability of, you know?
Yes, Andy.
Yeah, I guess I need to just comment on a couple of things for the benefit of my fellow counselors. We fund our contribution to PVTA from the Transportation Enterprise Fund. The source of funds in the Transportation Enterprise Fund is the parking revenue from all of the different aspects of parking revenue. And so I have a couple of just additional observations without wanting to draw a conclusion, because this is really for information. One is that, yes, when I was campaigning, as we all were, for our election last November, I heard a lot about transportation buses, but I also heard a lot about parking system transportation. And what we invest in trying to improve our transportation comes out of the enterprise fund also. And that's a budgetary decision that I think that we need to be making with some care, which is always, I say, I'm not drawing a conclusion, I'm only pointing out the dilemma, because the only alternative is to say, well, let's take it out of general taxation and put it into the general budget. But we all know how tightly budgeted the general budget is, and as I unfortunately use far too often, we get into the question of what new to do from the general budget. And I have to say something along the lines that I think one of our consultants said to us, too, which is, which police officer position are you going to eliminate in order to do that? I mean, it's really that closely budgeted. The other thing I wanted to share with you on the Transportation Enterprise Fund is that last year, the select board voted to not recommend the amendment to add 50,000, $3,000 to the Transportation Enterprise Fund expense in order to extend bus service during the summer months. And the reason was that it was coming out of free cash in the Transportation Enterprise Fund, which was $91,000. So it was committing more than half of the enterprise fund's free cash on a one-year basis. Town meeting, of course, made the decision that it made and had the right to do. But these are complicated issues, and I think that I really appreciate the discussion that we've been having, because I think we need to keep having these discussions in order to understand the problem and address it appropriately as to what is the best transportation system for the town, how is it supported, how, and what are its priorities, and what means the most to our constituents.
Are there other questions from the council? We did agree that there would be public comment at this, are there people that would like to make public comment at this time? Rob?
I'm going to change my middle name to Galileo. Madam Chair, I enjoyed hearing from my colleague and friend, Mr. Slaughter. It was at length, in your email to me, you grabbed me two minutes. To be honest, there's no way I could address all the points that, I agree with many of the things that Doug said in two minutes, so give me some guidance, because I'm not going to take two hours or however long we just heard, but I would like to have enough time to summarize some thoughts about this, because I, I just, I appreciate some guidance before I get started.
We really restrict public comment to one to three minutes, so I'll give you three.
Okay, well, I'll do my best. First of all, three weeks ago, I came here and I'm grateful for the time you provided then. I'm glad that you asked Doug to come in. The PVTA, I think he's referring to the person at PVTA who resigned last year, who was a UMass graduate and who worked with Glenn Barrington as a driver years ago, and is quite competent. I, I think UMass Transit has all its staff intact and is doing a good job with that. The reason I'm back is because a few days ago, I shared with you a very specific proposal, which I think should have been taken up back on May 15th, 2018. I did present it back then, it wasn't addressed, and here we are on March 4th, 2019, trying to do at least the minimum to restore one of, a pair of core routes within AMERST that serve not only the university, they do pass through the university, but which serve two communities which are home to many people who live in affordable or even deeply affordable housing. These are the routes 30 and 31. They also go north to Puffton Village, which is semi-affordable for many people. And I'm going to tell you how many people use those routes. The proposal is to just maintain the level of service that we had last summer, the evening service last summer, okay? This summer, those routes would lose their last trips of the day. And because of a slight complication with Route 31, which normally goes up to Sunderland, I've worked with the UMass Transit Director Glenn Barrington to make sure that there's a route engineer that can stay entirely within the town of AMERST, so that there's no concern about expending towns' funds, whatever their source. And I think they rightly do come from parking revenue, parking fines and fees. During July and August and also June, they're typically between 30,000 and 40,000 trips taken on those routes during those months. And a more meaningful number is the passengers per service hour. And what's interesting is that on those routes, even in the summer, they're between 40 and 50 passengers per service hour on each of those routes. That means that we're talking about 40 to 50 people that are going to be impacted potentially by having the last bus of the day cut, regardless of Counselor Pam's good comment that people may lose their ability to get home from work in the evening. And there are many people who work at restaurants and other places until after 9:00 PM. These buses are going to stop running by 9:00 PM. The proposal that was before you as a potential proposal, and I think it needs to be addressed as quickly as possible if we're going to not have people surprised come May 10th or so, which is when this reduced service comes into effect. The proposal was simply to essentially create a additional trip at the end of the day on Route 30 to Belcher Town Road, not going into Belcher Town as the old summer trip went, but just that far. And then to return to Puffton Village, not go on to Sunderland, and then do the last run of the day to East Hadley Road area. And Glenn Barrington, who is a very knowledgeable person, I think the most knowledgeable person in the entire PVTA providership system, I mean, it's a, he's the UMass Transit Director, not only quickly worked out a potential schedule for that particular restoration of service, but also gave a quick estimate. And it's a fraction of the 53,000 that had been appropriated by our legislature last spring and which the executive had the full authority to make use of during the last 10 and a half months. And unfortunately, nothing has happened yet. That's only one of many things that could, could be done or could have been done to restore just the minimum amount of service. So I, as someone who has some experience on transit planning, I brought this before you, and I'm happy to share with those of you who want to analyze these fairly detailed passenger accounts that I did get just before coming here, about 5:00 PM this afternoon. And again, I'm urging, since I heard Mr. Slaughter say this, and I'm grateful for that, that this is a restoration that would not require, doesn't expect it requiring a full Title VI analysis, full set of hearings, it's restoration of service that existed before, as I shared with you in an earlier message, and which I think is a first step in keeping the year-round residents of the town able to use transit to get to and from whatever they're doing, work, school, et cetera. I'd made some notes, but I'm not going to even address them, but I'm just going to say that I, I really think this is something we need to act on now. If we don't, it's a, it's an extreme disservice to a significant part of our population. And I've basically brought this to you, I'd hope, at a future meeting in the near, near future. The two steps that I recommended to you, which again, seem to make sense to Mr. Slaughter, at least be debated and considered, I'd love to be part of that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any further comment on this particular item at this time? Okay, Doug? Yes?
Turn on the microphone. If I hadn't made clear, I'm fully happy to look into the proposed suggestions that Mr. Custer's made. I'm interested in those for sure, and certainly will reach out to PVTA relative to what it would take for us to potentially add that service and, and sort of think about those more complicated factors of contract and year after year and that sort of thing. I'll, I'll ask those questions as well, in addition to just the, the simple sort of this summer question. So I'll ask all of those kinds of things and, and try to get some answers back to you as soon as I can.
Thank you. We appreciate that. I'm going to suggest we take a five-minute break. I just want to mention again that at the request of the people who have proposed the town meeting advisory committee, we have moved, we will be moving this item to another evening. They were not able to have the people they needed here for that discussion. The next item on our agenda, 6B, is the Community Resource Committee charge. And let me just preface this by saying, I want to make sure we have a robust conversation about the charge itself. At the end of that, we will need, however, to refer this to the Governance Organization and Legislative Committee, just as a matter of practice, and then, but it, that is not around the substance as it is around format. So there are six people who have been working hard on this committee charge, and I am going to just let them decide who's going to speak to the charge.
Well, Steve was going to read the charge.
Okay, Steve, yeah?
I just want to preface it briefly. There was the charge, the wording of the, oh. The wording of the charge had one omission that was first put up on our site. It's correct now. If somebody doesn't have the correct version, I have copies of it here.
And Margaret, it was provided in our packets tonight, correctly?
Tonight, right.
Yes.
So, if he may not have a, be sure.
So I think I'm going to start on this, so.
Please do.
It was a pleasure to work with the group of six. So at our first meeting, we decided that we'd have six co-chairs, and actually each person kind of rotated, taking leadership. At the second meeting, we elected Dorothy as our, as our, the, the, those co-chairs that were there, elected Dorothy as our, as our first among equals co-chair. So she's going to give the actual report. So I will read the actual charge. So starting at the beginning, we made a decision that Dorothy will explain in the report to propose to name Community Resources Committee, sustaining committee of the council, appointing authority as a town council president. We recommend five counselors, one-year appointments. And the, so that's also said in the composition, the quorum is three counselors. The purpose is to advise the council on matters related to the economic vitality and quality of life in AMERST. In furtherance of this purpose, the committee shall focus on the following areas, among others, planning, zoning, land use, and the master plan, community and economic development, including art and culture, housing mix, housing affordability, and neighborhoods. The charge, the action of the committee shall include, A, review and make recommendations to the council on matters referred to the committee regarding proposed or potential -- changes to planning, zoning or land use policies, proposed policies related to the public ways and public resources, proposed policies regarding housing and homelessness, policies regarding the relationship between the town and the Amherst institutions of higher education, proposed updates to the master plan, proposed measures to support the local economy of Amherst, then B, collaborate and/or coordinate with other town committees or departments as appropriate, and then C, upon request by the council, the committee may study and consider other changes affecting community resources, sustainability and economic development. The committee may offer policy and other recommendations within its purview for council discussion and consideration.
Okay. And then Dorothy, I guess you're next.
Do you want me to read the report?
No, you don't need to read it. Is there, are there specific highlights, however?
Well, specific highlights are that we made the name change because we felt that there needed to be a multi-member town committee on economic development, which would have non-counselors, at least a certain number of them, who are experts in various aspects of the business and economic development of the town, that this committee would consider economic development where it intersected with housing residences and the quality of life. And also, in the constant interest in arts and culture, some of that, in fact, also relates to economic development. But the concept was that if the quality of life in the town was very positive, that this would be a place where people would want to start businesses and to have businesses, and in fact, it would increase the economic vitality of the town. Another thing that we discussed was, particularly after town manager discussed public ways, which is a very complex subject, and I think he has a motion on that today, that we were, this committee was not seeking to in any way take over any of those functions, which the town does, because it's very complex and involve many departments. But if there were changes in policy or things that needed to be considered from that point of view, the committee would be interested in doing that. The focus on housing is very important, housing of all kinds, including affordable housing and things in a proper mix. So this is a place where housing, neighborhoods, economic development, arts and culture, public ways and town resources would come together with, and then we would also pay some attention to, but not be in charge of, just respond to, the whole question of updating the bylaws, the zoning bylaw and the master plan. But that would be done, I assume, by larger committees, but that we would be one of the committees that looked at and thought about those things in terms of the rest of the charge of the committee.
So there are four other members of this committee, Kathy, Chalene, George and Pat. Do any of you at this time have any comments that you'd like to add?
Just a quick statement. We actually looked across a bunch of towns to see what are other towns doing, and this is not an uncommon way of grouping. Some towns call it jurisdiction rather than purpose, but it's a way for the whole council to say, this requires more discussion, we're referring it to a committee. And so we were looking at the scope in other towns for some guidance on how they defined it. So we were trying to make it clear that this would still be the council making a decision, this requires more decision and referring it, rather than it's coming from below. It's a service function to the council. And so these ideas for changes might come from outside the council, the planning board might be sending us something, but it would be a way that the more intense discussion could be focused. And I just want to build on what Dorothy said, this last minute change to Community Resources Committee, because if there were a committee of the town called Economic Development, we thought it would be really confusing to have a committee of the council with the same name. So we just picked a broader name to avoid future confusion.
Okay. Any other comments from members of the committee? Chalene?
Yeah, I just want to emphasize what Kathy just said about the Economic Development Committee for the town, in making sure that down the road that there is such a committee, because that was my main interest in this Community Resource, no, what is it? Community Resource, whatever, committee, is how do we revitalize our economy within the context of ensuring the quality of services, within our commitment to our environment, to the people and equity? So it seems like this is a broader committee that, that's going to look at the different aspects without focusing on just the economic, and the idea was to then have a committee of the town to then focus on economic development.
Pat or George, any comments? Okay. All right, let's open this up for general discussion of the council. Yes?
I had two questions. The one that I realized before I got here was in Item C, where it says upon request by the council, I'm really not trying to re-wordsmith this, because I know you guys worked really hard to get it to this point, I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear. So there are two sentences in C, and am I supposed to perceive those as having an and? Or is there actually a D that says, without referral, the committee may offer policy and other recommendations? Because I'm trying to understand, everything up until then is upon request of the council, when it's been referred by the council, but then that one sentence says may offer policy, and I presume that's in response to a referral by the council, but I would just want to be sure that we're all on the same page.
Okay. Is there anybody in the group that wants to respond to that?
Didn't you write that one, Steve?
Steve, you get to respond.
That's an excellent point, and I need to take it under advisement. Because we did discuss mainly that we saw the operation as being referral, that the council would be referring ideas to the, to the committee, but we also left open the possibility that the reverse happens, that the committee can't say, we think it's important that we study blank. But in both cases, the council would be consulted. But we wanted to leave open this opportunity that this committee itself, it wouldn't completely be reactive, that it could be proposing, you know, proposing things within this charge, things within this mission.
Yes, Alyssa.
If I could then follow up, I would not object to that then being split into C and D. I just don't want it to stay within C, if that's the factual situation. And then the other quick question I had was based on something I may have misunderstood that was being stated by another counselor when I walked in, is the planning board would not be sending anything straight to this committee, right? The planning board, or would they? Wouldn't the planning board be sending things to the council and then we'd be referring it? Or what's the thought behind that?
That's, yes, Kathy?
The thought was it comes to the full council, and then to the extent it's, needs a lot more conversation, or it's a 13-person conversation. I mean, I think that's a decision that gets made at the council level.
Other questions, clarifications? Yes, Mandy Jo.
So I had a question about A. Everything but the fourth bullet point has the word proposed in front of it. And so I was curious whether there was a specific decision to not put proposed in front of the policies regarding the relationship between the town and Amherst institution of higher education, or was it accidentally left out? I'm just curious why that one's missing, proposed.
I believe it was accidentally left out.
I think it was actually somewhere between accidental and mindful.
I stand corrected. I wasn't at the second meeting.
I think we got tired of using the word proposed.
Well, so I'm just going to ask a question. If we put the word proposed in there, does that mean we can't consider and discuss things that exist right now? The status quo?
You could say proposed and/or revisions to existing policies.
Yeah, you have proposed or potential changes.
Okay.
She's not looking. Can I?
Yes, Mandy Jo.
I wonder if that proposed or potential or proposed, I mean, that argument could be made for almost every bullet point in A. Not to be a wordsmith either, but if we're looking at wanting this committee to look not only at things brought to it, but potentially current policies, we might want to look at a rewording of all of those, or somehow get the proposed and current somewhere in there, maybe in the statement before the bullet points or something.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. Darcy.
I have made this proposal before, but I just wanted to repeat my suggestion, my earlier suggestion, that we add the concept of sustainability in the purpose. And just to reference the master plan, it says, "Sustainability is a primary integrating goal of the Amherst community in this master plan. A broadly accepted definition of sustainability appears in our common future. A report commissioned by the United Nations, 'Sustainable development is development that meets the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs.'" And then it says, "The goal of sustainability underlies each of the key directions for Amherst master plan." So I believe that the town is going to be going through a process over the next few years, you know, through our climate committee and in other ways of really starting to wrap our heads around integrating sustainability into every single thing we do. And so this committee in particular really needs to have that in the purpose. So if we could just, even just take one of those sentences from the master plan and just put it in there, a phrase, I have a suggestion, which I would be glad to put forward as an amendment to the motion to adopt this. I don't know, are we adopting this tonight?
No, not necessarily. We'll decide that.
Okay, I'll just suggest that, that we could, in the sentence, "Purpose to advise the council on matters related to the economic vitality and quality of life in Amherst and the goal of sustainability, comma, a primary integrating goal of the Amherst community and of the town master plan," which is pretty much exactly what the master plan says. So that would just be having it pertain to all of these issues around Amherst resources.
Would you complete, would you read back to me, "And the goal of sustainability..."
Comma.
Comma.
"...a primary integrating goal of the Amherst community and of the town master plan," which is just a, just, I had to change some tenses in there a little bit to fit into the sentence, but it's the same wording as in the master plan.
Margaret, do you have that?
No, I don't have that. Can I just be clear?
Yeah.
Where in the charge is this?
Right. Okay. So we've kind of skipped around so far. The one suggestion has been made in the purpose, and it's after the word, words "life" in Amherst.
Right.
And the goal of sustainability, a primary integrating goal of the town...
Of the Amherst community and of the town master plan.
Of the Amherst community and the town master plan.
I guess we could just say, "And sustainability, which is a primary integrating goal of the Amherst community," rather than repeating goal twice.
Okay. Margaret, did you get that?
Darcy, can you read that, as you just suggested?
Quality of life in Amherst and sustainability, comma, which is a primary integrating goal of the Amherst community and of the town master plan.
Pat?
Yeah, I think that one I, one I agree that we need to bring back the word sustainability, because we're talking about sustainable economic development, blah, blah, blah. But I'm also feeling like the thing that Darcy just proposed is, could be simply stated, if we, if the purpose was using the master plan as a larger frame of reference to advise the council on matters of, and I think that would be easier, because the master plan has within it all the areas that this committee would be looking at. And this committee would be able to be working in collaboration with a lot of the other committees in town to really understand the impact more holistically. So I think we need to simplify this and add sustainability, but not in the frame that you suggested it.
I think we need to simplify.
Dorothy?
I will recommend Darcy's words, because the master plan is, one of the things that we're going to be examining, it's an updating. So I think that you put, the emphasis you put on it, Pat, it might end up making it a bit of a straitjacket, but Darcy's words make it clear that the goals of the master plan, not necessarily every specific thing in it, but the overall goals are something that should be emphasized, including sustainability.
Yes.
I feel like when we're using the master plan as a larger frame, we're talking about the goals of the master plan. So I don't feel like it's a straitjacket, because we've all acknowledged that the master plan has to be updated. We have to find a way to really collaborate on definitions, so we all mean the same thing when it's written down, and we're not interpreting it in different ways. I think it becomes critically important that there be a way to look at something that the planning board has decided, and to see whether it fits with the master plan. Another aspect of this committee really is to look at things more holistically and see the impact in other areas, and that's the other reason to use the frame of the master plan.
Are there other comments? Andy?
It's a little different, because I'm not on sustainability, but I am on the master plan. Master plan has very specific reference in our charter as to what the roles are of this body and other bodies in regard to the master plan. So I would suggest that if we refer this to another committee, or if we decide this as a group, consider something in that bullet, instead of proposed updates to the master plan, this proposed actions regarding the master plan in accordance with Charter Section 9.8.
Other comments? Alyssa?
Two quick ones, and I'm sorry if I missed you discussing this earlier. Under charge where it says "actions shall," I would think that would be "may" in this case, because we're not expecting that you necessarily have to report back on every one of these, like in the next 20 days.
I'm sorry, specifically where you're referring to.
Charge, actions of the committee shall, it should be actions of the committee may.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that you will add proposed in front of that fourth bullet point, or some other word out of the thesaurus. The other question I had, again, sorry if you covered this, is under composition, I don't know why you would list the quorum. There's no reason to list a quorum unless it's something different than simple, unless suddenly governance has decided we have to list quorum in every single charge.
That, I'll just, I, that was originally in there when we still had non-voting residents on it, so at the clause, we just didn't get it out to say, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments? George?
One of the things that we worked hard on was to come up with a very clear and simple statement of the purpose of this body. And I personally find this statement to be good as it stands. "We're concerned with matters related to the economic vitality and quality of life in Amherst." So I would prefer to keep it as it is.
I'm sorry, I did not hear that last.
I would prefer to keep it as it is.
Okay. Are there other observations and comments? So we have two options here, as I see it. We have a couple of options. We could try to wordsmith this here tonight, which I think is tough. We could refer this back to the ad hoc committee to take our suggestions and come back again. And to me, in many ways, that seems like the best option at this point. And we could suggest that not only do we refer it back to them, but upon their work on that, it would either come back to the council or it would go directly to the GOL. Yes, Mr. Bockelman, did you have some? I was looking for your help here, you know? I just, I just bought into one of Evan's decision trees. I mean, we could go this way or that way. Okay. Yes, Kathy?
I just have a quick comment on that, Lynn. I think what I heard with except for two places of a substantive issue, they were very good suggestions on the way to make the wording clearer, you know, splitting, there wasn't any disagreement on that. So there's a adding a clause or not adding a clause to the purpose, right? And then changing the wording on Andy's, on actions. But, so I'm just questioning whether you want to send it back to a committee or figure out George's, is it good except for this jinkering? It, I don't really care. I mean, we can spend another couple of hours discussing it, but we actually discuss these issues in the committee? Either way, saying that I think there's one more substantive thing here. Most of the others are, Alyssa's separating it into two sentences, changing a word from "shall" to "may," you know, that's just...
I mean, yes. Mandy Jo.
So in the past, the council has had a policy, I know we're new, but the last couple charges that have come through here have been referred to GOL for one final look for clarity, consistency, and actionability. That review has not taken place with this charge yet. And so I, as chair of the GOL committee, I would hesitate to act on this charge tonight without it going through the GOL per our previous policies of sending these off for that final review.
There was no intention to not do that. The question is whether or not we want to try to make substantive changes or we feel it's ready with the discussion here to just go to GOL. And I believe that what Kathy has pointed out is the two substantive changes are really the one about whether or not sustainability gets added into the first area under purpose, and the second one is...
It may not be a substantive, Andy was, I think, suggesting it's proposed actions regarding to the master plan in section, just a cross-reference to, so instead of the...
Oh.
I think that was a rewording of that bullet.
Yeah. That's, that's a clarity issue as far as I can see. Yes, Evan.
So it seems like there are some very minor changes that need to be made before this goes to GOL. But I think one of the options you laid out, and I want to speak in favor of that option, would be for us to essentially vote to refer this back to the ad hoc committee to make those final charges, but with the understanding that the ad hoc committee can then forward it directly to GOL without it having to come back to the council.
Yes.
Granted, the next, if the next GOL meeting where it could be discussed would be March 27th, I believe. So there is a council, no? We're not going to discuss it Wednesday.
Well, yeah. Wednesday, it's on the agenda for Wednesday if it's here.
Right. But if it still has to go back to the ad hoc committee, they have to post a meeting. So likely not, so there is a council meeting in between now and the time that we would likely pull it up, but I don't think it needs to be brought back to the council to go to GOL if we can make a motion that just says, once the ad hoc committee's done, just send it directly to GOL.
Steve.
So I can't speak for all the other members of the ad hoc committee, but I think to a certain degree, we thought that we've done our job and that we've put the ball in play. And now it's up to town council to figure out what, how it wants to dispose of this. So I would, sorry fellow, fellow ad hoc, fellow and fellow ad hoc committee members, but I would urge us not to refer it back to the ad hoc committee, but to take it to one of the, either take a vote on this tonight or to take it to one of the standing committees, to one of the, take a GOL or to vote on it tonight.
It needs to go to GOL.
But I would urge us not to, to, our job was to put the ball in play, which we've done.
All right. Dorothy.
I want to second George's comment. We were making, had many other sentences, and they were all good and meaningful. And he was a strong voice for a simple, clear charge. And we all got rid of some of our favorite things. And I think there's something to be said for that, and I'm kind of curious to know about the rest of the council's opinion on that. And in reference to sustainability, it is mentioned in C and to consider other issues affecting community resources, sustainability, and economic development. So it is there. It's not in the same place of primacy that you're recommending, but I, there's a lot to be said for a very clear, simple, understandable charge.
Further comment? Mandy Jo.
So I'll, I'll take up Dorothy's recommendation in response. I liked the general succinctness of what the six of you came up with. So I would second George's thinking on the purpose statement.
I just have a clarifying question for the town council. So I think putting sustainability in the two different places has a very different meaning. The first one, as Darcy recommended, was saying that this is kind of the framework and starting to shift our culture towards making, integrating all our decisions with, or at least intentionally investigating what would be the most sustainable option within this decision. And then putting it in C is that we will consider sustainability initiatives or issues. So I think as a town council, we want to maybe decide, you know, how important and where does this issue stand?
So I, we're not adopting the entire charge tonight, I want to be very clear. But if there is a sentiment that we want to vote on this issue of that first sentence and adding, then let me have a motion to that, and then we'll take it to a vote. So, Dorothy, you want to put it in the form of a motion?
Darcy.
Darcy, I'm sorry. Darcy. Sorry. I apologize.
I move that we add after the words, "quality of life in Amherst," the following words, "and sustainability," which is a primary integrating goal of the Amherst community and of the town master plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alyssa, is there a second? Any further conversation? Okay. All of those in favor of adding that phrase? Let's read it again. So the full sentence would read...
The full sentence would read, "To advise the council on matters relating to the economic vitality and quality of life in Amherst and sustainability, which is a primary integrating goal of the Amherst community and of the town master plan."
Okay. It's been, motion's been made and seconded. Any further conversation? All those in favor of adding that phrase, please raise your hand.
And, and when we say we're in favor, could we, it's, I mean, just the two, I mean...
The favor means that we are going to add that phrase.
What I mean is, can we just tweak it to make sense? But I mean, is the, it is, I want to include it in that, but it just should not read awkward. It feels, it's a little awkward right now, but I would like to include that in the...
All right. All those in favor?
So are we doing what Shalini said, that we're approving this in principle to be edited?
Yes, that's fine.
Approving in principle.
Then when it goes to the committee, if they, the GOL committee, they can tweak it for understanding. Okay? All those in favor?
Is that it?
One, two. Okay? Opposed.
Wait, 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 wait.
Okay, that felt different than the first time.
Yeah. I raised my hand, yeah.
All those in favor of adding this phrase at the end of that sentence?
Something was... Yeah.
All those opposed? What did we have? Pat?
The vote was six, six in favor, six opposed, one abstention, so that motion fails.
Any other comments? Yes, Evan.
So my understanding is what we're doing right now is finalizing the charge to go to GOL, correct?
No. We're finalizing the, we, all we did was deal with the one issue that had more substance to it. It's now going to GOL. We're going to have a motion for that. And once it comes back from GOL, we will have a motion to adopt the charge.
So two other things that came up in our discussion was, one, the idea of proposed being in front of policies, and two was the other one of splitting C into two different things, C and D. I would argue that those are substantive and should be handled before it goes to GOL.
All right.
If there was any disagreement on that, I mean, we could just quickly do those word changes and send it back to you with those word changes in it. Yeah.
Okay. So let's deal with the one that's under A, referring to the fourth bullet that has to deal with policies. Do I hear a motion?
It was mine.
Yes, Mandy Jo.
I move to, in the fourth bullet point of A, add the word "proposed" in front of "policies."
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion? Is there a second? Okay. It's been made and seconded by Evan. Yes. Discussion.
In her previous speaking on this topic, Mandy Jo said, "proposed and current," perhaps to be added to all of them.
To all of the bullets.
Yes.
Okay. Do I... Mandy Jo? It was your motion.
So someone else had suggested that. I don't have a problem with that. I had suggested maybe figuring out a better wording, but that can be done in GOL.
Okay. So proposed and current. Proposed was the motion and seconded, yes. Evan.
If we're, if we're going to write proposed and current, why even have either of those? There's no third option. Might as well just open each bullet, changes to planning and zoning, policies related, policies regarding.
I think, I think we're getting into, okay. This is one reason why I did not feel this was a substantive change. I felt this is something the GOL can deal with.
Okay.
Okay? So we're going to withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. There was a fourth one, or third one, which was to separate C into C and D. May I hear the motion? George?
Second.
And seconded by Pat. Any further conversation on that? All those in favor? Opposed? No? Great. This, and now I have, would like to hear a motion to refer this...
There's one additional one about the master plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Under proposed updates to the master plan. Andy, would you please read the motion the way you'd like it?
Proposed actions regarding the master plan in accordance with Charter Section 9.8.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. I'm sorry? Second, Pat. Any further conversation? So it would say proposed. Andy, do you want to read that again?
Again, it's, it's on the bullet right now that reads...
Proposed updates.
Yeah, it's, it's under A, and it's where it's proposed updates to the master plan and change into proposed actions regarding the master plan in accordance with Charter Section 9.8.
Okay. It's been, motion's been made and seconded. Any further conversation? All those in favor? Opposed? No? It's unanimous. Are there any other, any other changes that we see that we need to vote on? Okay. Then I'd like to have a motion to refer this to the, to refer the charge of the committee on community resources, Community Resources Committee, excuse me, to the Governance Organization and Legislative Committee as presented or as amended.
I move that we do that.
Okay. Is there a second? Kathy? Any further conversation? All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay. It's, the motion is to refer the charge of the Committee on Community Resources to the Governance Organization and Legislative Committee as we have amended it. Okay? Okay. All those in favor? All right. That's unanimous. Motion was made and seconded. Now, has the ad hoc committee approved all your minutes?
There is, almost. There's one person who didn't respond yet, so I'll have to get...
But you have five people who have?
Yes.
Okay. Then you don't, you have approved minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
It's unanimous.
Those, the committee has approved its minutes and, you's looking at me a little strangely. Margaret?
My understanding is that the committee needs to actually vote to approve the minutes.
Alyssa?
I don't know why that's true. We don't have rules that say we have to vote to approve minutes. Minutes can be approved any number of ways under mass law, and so since we haven't set rules that say that, you can assign one person to do it, you can say it's by consensus, you can vote to do it, but obviously if you're going to vote to do it, you have to post a meeting to do it. So I'm, don't see, we don't have that rule.
Can I ask for a vote of that committee in this meeting? Clarification? Hmm? They're not posted.
They are not posted.
Okay. I'm going to suggest that at the next time that the council meets, that that group post a meeting, we'll call that meeting, you can vote on your minutes, and then we'll vote to dissolve.
Okay. We did vote, the four of us who met, on the first set of minutes.
On the first set, but the second set.
And the second set, all four people approved them of the four who were there.
Yeah, I was in the council, so we had to approve them.
Oh.
So if you needed a majority vote...
So they approved the minutes at the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Then in that case, I would like a motion to dissolve the Community and Economic Development Committee ad hoc.
I so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. Excellent.
Can I make a very brief comment?
Yes.
I just want to say I really enjoyed this, and I think that the council can do something quickly when we put our mind to it, and we did it, and I think we did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, all six of you, all co-chairs.
All thirteen.
Okay. And the council. All right. We're moving on to the calendar for the regional school budget, and I'm going to call on Andy to introduce this topic.
It's, it's hard to do this without just touching on the whole report of the Finance Committee. It's... Committee. There are really four documents that you have, that all touch in some way on this, one being the Finance Committee Report that's dated February 27, one is a memo that I sent to you, March, that's dated March 1, the calendar, which you received today, which sets forth dates, and then, of course, the draft motions, which encompass proposed language to deal with all of the recommendations of the committee. Just to touch on the report really quickly, because it's, I'm gonna really do mostly about the school budget, is that we have been working, as indicated in Part 2, on the questions of the capital projects and the schools in particular, and we're hoping that there will be a report on the 12th of the month, if not the succeeding meeting from Sean Mangano, responding to questions that are outlined there. But the major issue that we're confronting is something that I've brought to the attention of the committee several times before, so I'm not gonna go into it in great detail, because it's also explained in both of those memorandums that you have, that if we don't consider the budget separately, we will, for the regional schools, the other three towns will have acted on the budget, and if they adopted the budget, they will be adopting a budget that's bounding on Amherst without any action out of the council. And, so that we think that it is important to exercise a discretion that's allowed us in the charter to separately consider the regional school budget from the rest of the budgets, so that we can take up the budget as a council at a time that's more commens- commensurate with the town meetings of the other three towns. So, that is the first and probably most important action for tonight, then there are two other subsidiary actions that are proposed that flow from it. One is to have the, have a referral automatic, in other words, vote now, in advance of getting the referral of the budget from the Regional School Committee to the council, and just have a motion today, or in our next meeting, that upon receipt, it is automatically referred to the Finance Committee, so that the Finance Committee can start to work on it, because it doesn't have a whole lot of time to go through the process of conducting the hearing that is required, and have the consideration that has to be there. And then the third, which is a separate action, which I can talk about later after we've addressed the other points, if you, or now, as the president wishes, which is to schedule an additional Finance Committee meeting for-
Town council.
Excuse me, Town Council meeting, for the 29th of April, I believe is the date, in order to consider the budget, as opposed to considering it on the 22nd.
Okay. Are there any questions specifically about these issues? Okay, then I am going, yes, I'm Car, sorry, Mandy Jo?
My only one is, I didn't see this calendar to have a vote on the, I always forget what it's called, the regional assessment, thank you, the assessment portion, is that going to be done at the same time we do the regional budget, or the regular budget? Or is it something that comes up whenever it's ready from the region?
Andy?
The way that the process works is that the Regional School Committee will recommend a budget that includes an assessment method for the year, and it is a single recommendation, and of course, it's structured so that it goes to all four communities at the same time, since the other three communities are acting on it as part of their town meeting. It is frequent that it is split into two or articles, and, but it is based upon one submission. The Finance Committee's interpretation is, is that it's all a part of the same budget action, and whether the council ultimately is dealing with it as one motion or two, is a matter to be, that can be determined later.
Yes. Evan?
So I just wanna make sure I'm clear on everything that's being proposed, so the first motion makes sense. The second motion is basically to say that once the Regional School Committee approves the budget, it will automatically go to Finance Committee, not having to wait for referral at our March 18 meeting?
That's correct.
And the, the third one, the rationale behind that is that the Finance Committee doesn't believe it would have enough time between March 12 and April 22 to actually bring a recommendation to the council by the April 22 meeting?
Andy, you wanna speak to that?
I will speak to it, and then I'll ask other members of the committee to speak to it too, because I feel a little bit awkward about this particular point, and the, I will be away on the 22nd. My ability to participate remotely in that meeting is questionable because of the circumstances of my absence, and so, the question that was before the Finance Committee was whether it was comfortable having the regional budget considered here at the council in my absence. I am perfectly fine with that decision, the committee made a determination that their recommendation was otherwise, and that's where it is.
And which one of the four of us would like to echo that one? Kathy? The, let me just say that the rest of the Finance Committee feels that, given Andy's knowledge of the regional school budget and the process of assessment, is critical for the councils to understand this as they take their vote, we want him to be here. Evan?
So I understand that. So, and then the reasoning behind not just trying to take it up at the May 6 meeting, which would still be before one of the four towns brings it up, is that if it's not done in that meeting, then we don't have the flex, so April 29 allows us the flexibility to push it back?
That is correct. Right. Okay, anything else? Any other questions about the timeline, or, so, I'm gonna begin the motions? All right? I'm going to make a motion that in accordance with Section 5.5(c) of the Amherst Home Rule Charter, I move separately consider an act on the Amherst Pelham Regional School District budget due to the agreement with the three other towns in the Regional School District, and that in compliance with Section 5.5(a) and 5.5(b) of the Amherst Home Rule Charter, adopts the schedule as outlined in the memo from the Finance Committee Chair, Andy Steinberg, dated March 1, 2019, regarding the proposed schedule for Regional School District budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Mandy Jo? Is a second? Further discussion on that? All those in favor? Oops, roll call. No, that's not the one that needs the roll call. This one is allowed without a roll call, am I correct?
Second one is noted to require a roll call.
I'm looking to you, Mandy Jo, because of the charter.
I'm not sure the roll call wasn't included, because we expected an absent member to vote, who's gonna be the one to participate.
Okay. Hello?
It won't hurt to do a roll.
Let's do roll call, okay? The town clerk will read the names.
Counselor Baumill?
Yes.
Counselor Brewer?
Yes.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Counselor Dumont?
Yes.
Counselor Griesmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
Counselor Pam?
Yes.
Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, second motion, I move in court, in accordance with Section 5.5(a) of the Amherst Home Rule Charter, I move to refer the budget recommendate, recommended by the Regional School District for fiscal year 2020 to the council's Finance Committee upon receipt by the Town Council. Is there a second? Pat was the second? Is there any further conversation? Okay, then roll call vote?
Counselor Brewer?
Yes.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes.
Counselor Dumont? Counselor Griesmer?
Yes.
Counselor Hanke?
Yes.
Counselor Pam?
Yes.
Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Counselor Baumill?
Yes.
The vote's unanimous.
Okay, and then finally, to schedule an additional meeting, I move to schedule an additional meeting of the Town Council to be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, April 29, 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
Ryan is the second? All those in favor? It's unanimous? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, there, it was 12 for it, and one abstention. All right. Paul or Andy, we're going to, oh, no, actually, I wanna use the opportunity of already being on the issues of the Finance Committee, to just ask Andy briefly to report on the four towns' meeting of this last Saturday.
Well, four towns' meeting this last Saturday really dealt, almost in its entirety, with the question of the assessment method, and at the point where we went into the meeting, the committee of four people, one from each town, that had worked on the issue and considered and eliminated dozens of different methodologies, had come down to two, and both of them were considered at the meeting, and the decision on which to recommend was the unanimous decision, all four towns were ultimately in support of it. The understanding is that we would try and do, do the method that was talked about for two years, and that it would then be subject to review, and essentially, it is to move towards the direction of a methodology that is 50% based upon what is known as the minimum contribution that's required for each town, and with the balance, but not just on the regional, on 50%, but on the five-year average of the region of that minimum contribution, and then the rest based upon the current regional agreement method, which is the five-year rolling average of enrollment. One of the things that was very attractive about this process that would come out of this, is that because everything is being based upon averages over a longer period of time, that go backwards four years, that there's a much higher degree of predictability going into the process, as to what the proportion expected from each town will be going forward, and that predictability was ultimately the attractive factor of that method that swayed both the small committee and the larger discussion that happened on Saturday.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right, then, we're gonna move on to the calendar of the town budget, and Paul, I believe you're gonna speak to that.
There's really no action required for the council at this point, so that's why that motion, your motion sheet is eliminated.
Right. Did you wanna speak to the calendar itself at all?
Oh, that's the Finance Committee's calendar, that's in your packet, to, I think that's outlined a little bit in the memo from the Finance Committee.
Okay.
And then, that establishes a fairly aggressive schedule for the Finance Committee during May, once they get the budget, they will be meeting twice a week. I think there'll be discussion, the president has talked about having discussion with other members of the council as to whether they wanna be present for some of those discussions, because those will be pretty intense discussions. Once the Finance Committee makes its recommendation to the full council, you will have 30 days, basically, to vote on the, on the budget during the month of June. So I think working on that schedule, that is good for the Finance Committee to come up with its plan of action for the, to get to this, to get to the recommendation to the council, which is what is in front of you tonight.
Okay, Andy, did you, did you have any further comments?
I think the only things that I would note about this is, when you look at the Finance Committee budget, and it talks about FY19 budget review, the purpose of those reviews is to use the current budget and how it is structured, and what it proposes, as a way of familiarizing the Finance Committee as to how the budget will be structured that they're looking, that we're all looking at, quite frankly. The, the critical pieces, of course, are the ones that talk about FY20 budget, because they are about actions that we're actually going to be taking. The Finance Committee that existed previously as a body of town meeting would regularly, through the course of February and early March, meet with all department directors and department heads, in order to hear from them about the proposed budget, and to be able to ask questions that relate the budget back to the operations of the department, which is ultimately what budgets are about. And, the Finance Committee will be doing that on the very aggressive schedule that was just described by the town manager, and of course, that was the point, that if other members of the council wished to attend, we certainly would consider that as a reasonable action. I think that the president will need to speak to that later, because the requirement would be that there has to be some mechanism of knowing how many people actually are gonna be there, and whether it needs to be posted as a meeting of the council in addition to a meeting of the committee. And then, based upon the information that we'll receive, can take the action that's required to us in the charter, in making a recommendation to the council as a whole, and then the council will have the period in June to take the action that is specified again in the charter.
So let me just mention that specifically, May 7, 9, 14, and 16, is when we, as a Finance Committee, will be hearing from the various town departments. It is not our intention to bring them back to the general Town Council when we look at the budget, unless necessary. I will be asking Angela Mills to be polling people, to determine whether you plan to attend those, any of the, any of the additional dates, so that we know whether or not we need to call a committee of the whole, meaning a committee of the council. And so, please be responsible, responding to Angela when I send that email out. I also wanna mention that, as you've seen- I also want to mention that, as you've seen in all of this, we start this Thursday with a public forum on the budget. That's where people talk about what they'd like to see in the budget. And the town manager talks about the budget. It is a regular... It is a special council meeting, so we will call it. And then later on, on the 21st, you notice in this calendar, we have a public hearing on the budget. And then finally, we hope to adopt the budget before the end of June. In fact, we legally have to, or we'll be sitting here till 2:00 in the morning. Anything else? Alyssa?
Associated with the comment you made about posting a meeting of the whole, I can't possibly stress enough, just go ahead and post those meetings as town council meetings.
Okay.
They're not regular meetings. They're not part of our regular schedule. They don't require public comment, because we're compelling them as regular meetings. That way, you just don't have to poll. And if a quorum doesn't show up, it doesn't show up.
Okay.
And the minutes can just be the minutes of the finance committee.
Great.
So it's just one more thing to answer.
Thank you. I also... That, by the way, allows you, as a member of the council, but not a member of the finance committee, to be just as interactive with the presentations. Andy?
Yeah, the other thing that I just wanted to remind you of, because in case you aren't yet familiar with all the minutia about the charter provisions on the budget, is that the public forum is to be called by the president. The hearings are to be... Are a requirement of the finance committee.
Right.
And so you see the dates of the hearings on the schedule. And because we just voted to separately consider the regional school budget, there's actually a requirement that we have a second hearing regarding the regional school budget. And we are cognizant of the fact that the school committee itself is also required to have a hearing on the budget. But the charter mandates that we take that action, and that's why it's listed.
And Andy, the one on April 2 is called by the finance committee as well, correct?
That's correct. The one on April 2 is required by the charter to be called by the finance committee. And the...
Also the one...
One on May 21,
Yes.
Which is regarding the other portions of the budget is under the same set of requirements from the charter.
Okay. Yes, Evan?
Just looking for... I feel like all I'm doing tonight is looking for clarification. All of this that's outlined here is completely separate from the capital improvement plan, for which there's also a required public forum. Would we expect that we'll see something similar from JCPC to this?
Yes. Okay. And yes, we do have to have that before the end of June as well. Okay? We're running as fast as we can. Are there any other questions on the budget? If not, I'm going to move on. Committee reports, let me just say, we'll have a committee report from GOL, Governance, Organization, and Legislation. We've already heard finance. We have a committee report from Outreach, Communications, and Appointments, and Rules of Procedure. I have asked the person who is presently convening the Bylaw Review Committee, and I've not received any report from them, so we'll skip that. And on the Energy and Climate Action Ad Hoc Committee, we'll defer that till March 18. So, GOL? Mandy Jo?
So there's no written report this week. We are meeting on Wednesday. Last week, we also met. So I'll go through briefly what we did last week. There will be a full report written for it, because there are some actions we're asking of the council. We adopted a template for the committee charges. We adopted a guidelines document for how we will review bylaws, measures, charges, things like that, for clarity, consistency, and actionability. We decided to undertake a review of town committees for structure... I'm still not good at describing this as I look at Pat. To see if there's any overlapping committees, if there's a way, if there's a need to consolidate any, to recommend dissolution of any, to create any. So we'll be taking a look at an economic development committee, things like that. There is no timeline for that review at this point. But I thought I'd let you guys know we're going to undertake that. And then we will have some requests to the town council at a meeting that I know next meeting is very busy. So I'll work with our president to figure out when they'll show up on the agenda to recommend that we ask the town council to request that all town committees that were created at least five years ago review their charges. And if they seek changes, that they reformat their charges into the new template we just adopted, and then submit those revised charges to the town council to adopt or reject after review of the governance committee. So that will come with a bigger description of that at a future meeting, when we have a report in writing. At this week's meeting, we will be discussing the audit committee charge that was referred to us at last town council meeting, the community resources committee charge that was referred to us tonight, and the public ways recommendation memo that was referred to us at the last town council meeting. And if time allows, that organization and structure of town committees, and a continued discussion by the committee of the GOL committee charge.
Questions? Alyssa?
I still don't understand why it's that committee's purview to have anything to do with any town committees that currently exist. I understand the point of having people review their charges regularly, although I will give the caveat that I'm fairly confident that not every committee that has a charge actually knows where their charge came from, because the charge doesn't say on the charge. And some of them are based on town meeting action and some are not. So hopefully, they'll all have staff to help them with that. But that seems reasonable to me, because that'll help the public to have a more consistent structure. But for GOL to be undertaking a review of town committees that have existed, that exist under master general law, to see if there's overlap, recommend dissolution... I'm not seeing that as part of the charge at all. So I'm concerned. I don't know why that has anything to do with town council. Why would we check the conservation commission's charge to see if it overlaps with a future economic development committee? What does that have to do with us?
Other comment?
I just was pulling up the charge, and it's not part of the charge either. I mean, so I'm not sure why it's being done, but I also... Isn't something I think we asked to have done. At least, I don't remember asking to have it done.
Okay. Other comments? Shalini? Shalini?
Did I hear the governance committee is working on the economic development committee? No. Did I hear that wrong?
Mandy Jo?
So my... What I said was in undertaking a review of town committee charges that would potentially include looking at proposing an actual creation with a charge for an economic development committee. It could potentially include that.
Other questions, comments? Yes, Alyssa?
So do I just keep saying that at every meeting? Or do we have a conversation about what the charge means? Because I don't want to fight. I just don't understand. And I don't want to just keep bringing it up randomly and having it continue unless... Are we changing the charge? Do we all agree? Do we not care? I mean, I just... I don't understand.
So the question that's been raised is whether or not the GOL committee, Governance, Organization, and Legislation Committee, has the... Is within its purview, based on its charge, the ability to look at all town committees and look at their charges and ask for consistency? Is that...
That part, I'm willing to concede.
Okay.
The whole speech about how, whether or not these committees should even exist, because they have overlapping charges and they might be... They might not need to exist, that whole part, no. That's the part I object to.
Okay. George?
I think we saw it as a kind of housekeeping task, and eventually, we'd come back to the council for review and discussion. But if we don't do it... I mean, you could argue that we don't care. It doesn't matter. Just let it be. But if we do care and we do want to have someone systematically go through the existing committees and make sure that things are, so to speak, in order, it would seem to fall naturally to us. But perhaps the charge doesn't allow it, fine. We certainly have enough to do. We don't need any more extra work. But the question arises then, well, who does do it, if you care to have it done?
Okay. Shalini?
That was my question to you. If they don't do it, who is doing it? Who, you know, who is...
So the question is, do we care to have it done? And if we do, who's doing it? Dorothy?
My question is slightly different. I could see a good argument for doing what she described. However, I think it could be put off until we've done other things that are more pressing.
Okay. Other comment? Evan?
So just to add some clarifications, this is not something that GOL is undertaking, like, in the next few months. This is... Part of what GOL has been doing is figuring out who we are and what our role is, and the different roles that we can play to serve the council. This was an idea that we generated as part of that discussion as perhaps a long-term goal of GOL. It's certainly not something that you'll see on an agenda in the very near future. I think that part of this has to do with how we might interpret the charge. And I think that the charges... There's many ways you could read this. Whether or not, when we're talking about governance and organization, we are talking about strictly the governance and organization of the council, or whether we are thinking about that broadly. That's, I think, something that we could debate in how we read the charge. I think I could make an argument to interpret the first bullet of our charge either way. But I think one of the things that we realized is we have a lot of committees in this town, and we have a lot of vacancies. And the question is, do we still need all of those committees? And as one of our committee members said, perhaps we need to Marie Kondo our committees. And so then the question becomes, right, who does that? And if any committee, it seems to fall within the purview of GOL. If the council as a whole disagrees, that's the council.
Steve?
So any counselor can propose a project or a policy change or a bylaw. Any citizen can, you know, following a process, can also propose additions, eliminations of committees. I hope that we don't ad hoc committee everything. So I think that this is a really important project. The cleaning up and the strengthening of the committees of this town. Totally understand that some committees, in order to be a town, you must have a planning board. You must have a conservation commission. You must have a zoning board of appeals. You must have this, you must have the... Other ones are dictated by the charter. Other ones were dictated by town meeting. I think we have enough institutional knowledge to wade through that. I think this project needs to be done. The GOL is of... The one committee at Mont is the one where this suggestion has come up. So if it requires a change to the charge of the GOL, let's go for it. But I don't think that we should squash ideas that need to happen, because it's not explicitly anticipated in any of our charges.
I'm... Okay. I'm going to suggest the following. That we not continue this conversation until such time as we have the charge of the committee before us. And if the committee would like to... If the GOL would like to propose a change or an amendment or some modification of its charge, it does so at that time. And I welcome that at any point in time. Okay? Because we don't even have the charge in front of us at this time. Okay? And I, by the way, think that that is probably something each of the standing committees may have to do from time to time. Okay? Is there any other... So we're going to move on to Outreach, Communications, and Appointments. Sarah?
So we don't actually have anything written that we submitted to you. I will tell you that we have met every Monday for, I think, seven weeks. And the biggest thing that we've worked on so far is a procedure for appointments. Mostly, the decision tree, big word we've been using a lot, has been for town council appointments. And this sounds like it might be an easy thing to do, just says we do it. But I can tell you, it's extremely complex. We cannot use the same process for appointments that select board did for many reasons, one of which is that we're a legislative branch and not an executive branch, amongst other things. We are wrestling with a process that would protect the privacy of people who are asking to be on committees in a volunteer position, as well as making sure that whatever process we use is as transparent as it can be, so that members of the public feel like they know how we are deciding on the people that we are nominating, and then why we're nominating them. This has taken seven weeks of intense conversation of many decision trees and also a lot of legal advice. We have gone through many iterations of decision trees. And this particular one also is not just for town council appointments, but it will also link back into... There are certain things that we need... It's put forth in the charter that we'll need to confirm. So don't worry. We got it all under control. We had a meeting today in which I'm fairly certain that we have narrowed down all of the questions that we need to ask for possible decision trees, legal questions that would... It's the last step, we think, that need to be answered, so that by the time that we meet... We're taking one Monday off. We will meet on March 18. We should be able to say... Vote and say, this is our process, and we can stand behind it philosophically. We can stand behind it. It's so lawful, it's crazy. Like, we have asked the attorney generals. We've asked the, you know... We've asked our town attorney. So we should be able to do that for you. At our meeting today, we also talked about the fact that we have had so much discussion around appointments that the outreach part of our program sort of had fallen away. We want to make sure that we just keep running full tilt on that. So we actually created a subcommittee of our subcommittee. And we have... We formed it. We have members. We will be meeting Monday, the 18th, right after our OCA meeting. So we really take outreach very seriously. We take outreach and how we coordinate it with the community participation officers and the resident advisory committee. So we're definitely right on that. We're also going to be talking a little bit more about the CAF forms. right on that. We're also going to be talking a little bit more about the CAF forms, and we're also looking into possibly some ways in order to have somebody else take our minutes. One of the things that we, was brought up to us today is maybe it could be a senior tax credit sort of thing, and so we're on that as well. So, you know, the senior tax credits that they do, that perhaps that that might be something that would be a possibility, that taking minutes could be, I don't know that. I haven't even asked that, so don't, it was just, it was just a workshop idea. So, anybody out there who's saying, what? Yeah, we haven't even asked yet, but I, we're, we're working really hard, and we hope that we'll have a lot of concrete things for you by our March 18th meeting.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, let me just elaborate on that. Evan?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Sarah said, to stress the amount of work we've done to make sure that everything we do complies with open meeting law. Of our two-and-a-half-hour meeting today, a full hour and a half of it was spent on speakerphone with town attorney, just making sure that we're checking all of our boxes, so you can be confident that we are making sure we're coming forth with as solid a process as possible legally.
Okay. Any further comment from the committee? Questions? Rules of procedure ad hoc?
We meet tomorrow. We'll do the stuff you referred to us, plus all the other stuff. It'll be great.
The only thing I ask of this committee is if there are things that perhaps should be instead referred to GOL, that you let us know. Okay?
I would just follow up on that by saying, GOL is going to get all the leftovers. So, what we don't get done is going to be their problem. So, but I don't see us carving anything off at this point. But there may be sections, we say, to be discussed in the future.
Okay. Given the fact that your committee has a deadline of June 3rd. All right? Anything else on committees? We have no minutes to approve. We've done proclamations. Town managers report. Paul, some highlights?
Yes. First, you already mentioned the events on March 2nd, which went off very well from our perspective. There were six arrests, but that's a relatively average weekend for us. A number of transports, per usual. But again, want to thank publicly the, our mutual aid partners. Terrific planning by the police department, fire department, UMass Police Department, and the university. So, a very good day. And as we were, we, on that day, we run two emergency operations centers, one at the university, one at our police station. And as we closed our emergency operations center at around 5:30, we received a notice of sudden loss of pressure in our water system, and that, and this is something that you all heard. I hope you all received a phone call, or a text, or both, or email something. If you're, if you didn't, you should be signed up for our emergency notification system. So, this happened on Saturday night. This, usually when something like this happens, it means there's a fire, or a water main break. Because you see a loss of pressure, it means our water tank is dropping the amount of water that's in it. The on-call water people were, came into town. They didn't see any water main break, or there was, we knew there wasn't a fire. They brought additional supervisors in, and then they identified the problem as being at well number three. We have five wells, if you recall from your orientation with the Department of Public Works, that we have five wells plus two surface treatment, two surface water areas. So, one of the wells was pumping, so, all the indicators were saying, everything's working normally, except that we're losing water. And no one could figure, figure it out just looking at the equipment, because all of the pumps were pumping regularly. But what was happening is that one of the wells was pumping water, not into the system, but out of the system. And it had an overflow valve that popped open, and that created a problem. I'm using my language, this is not what the engineers would say. So, they quickly shut down that well, and it was isolated from the system. This greatly reduced the loss of water from the system. We turned, we brought a couple more water operators in, we turned on our fifth well, and that started operating. And we continued to ask people to conserve water. So, that was all done with about, within about an hour. And by 8:30, we were notifying people around 6:30. By 8:30, we felt we had it under control, but the water had already gone out of the system, so it took time to recover. Fortunately, it was a Sunday, it's typically a low-water-use day, and, and that has been built up, and it's back to normal now. The pump that had broken has been fixed, so everything's back to normal. And so, but again, thanks to DPW, Amy Roszeki, and Guilford Mooring, and all the water, all the water guys who came in to help identify the problem and fix it. Thanks to our communications team, Dave Zomack, Julie Fetterman, Brianna Sunrid, who were out trying to maintain good communication. We did a lot of outreach to the university and the two colleges because of our, my last, when I first started here, we had an experience with a drought that was, that we had to work really hard to make sure the communication worked well. So, everybody did a terrific, terrific job, and that day was over. So, a few other things. We've had some snow emergencies, as you've seen. We had one last night. And I want to make sure people understand, we get calls about saying, how am I supposed to know if there's a snow emergency? You know, I know you have these blue lights, but if I'm not out of bed, how am I supposed to know? And so, you can sign up for emergency notifications through email or text. You can always go to our website. We send it out to the press and to all the media, so it will scroll on the screen. There is the flashing lights. We put it in multiple places on our website, so, but the basic rule, rule would be to, if it's going to snow, expect that you're going to have to move your car. And just assume that if it snows, you're going to have to move your car. And that's the message we want the public to hear. Because we don't like towing cars, we don't like ticketing cars, but if they're in the way of the DPW plows, we have to do that. Otherwise, it leaves a giant mess, and creates hazards for public safety vehicles and for the general public. Just a few other things. We'll be doing a Cup of Joe thing on March 15th, from 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning at Atkins in South Amherst. And my guest that day will be Chief Tim Nelson. Our CPOs have been hard at work, continuing to work. One attended a very successful meeting on Sunday that George and Dorothy put on, and was very happy to have been there. And we're trying, they're anxious to have a conversation with the OCA committee to help develop a really good model for district meetings, so we can support the district meetings in a sustainable, sustainable way. And we want our staff to be able to attend the district meetings, but we want to do it in a manageable way. And George had actually suggested some, had some ideas on how we could do that successfully. So, I think there's a real opportunity here to gauge how we handle staff attendance at your district meetings, and think it through, so that anytime you say, oh, I'd like to set my district meeting, we have to multiply that by five districts times twice a year. And we want to help, but it would be helpful for the council to say, here's what we expect the standards to be. What I tell people is that my time is elastic, so anytime you invite me to anything, if I can do it, I absolutely will be there. Our department heads have a fair amount of elasticity in their time, too. They have higher expectations. Our line staff, I'm very protective of their weekends, because if you say, oh, it's only an hour, it's actually four hours, and it sort of hangs over them for the weekend. And I don't like asking them to do that unless we have to. If it's important, we will always do that. But we just like to set the expectations for our staff, and make sure that it's in alignment with what is serving your constituents. We should, I know you want to provide really good services to your constituents, which I think you've been doing in a really well, good way. Many of you may not know about our Kanakasaki-Sister City program, so that delegation from Japan will be coming at the end of March, March 24th. There's typically a reception, it's just a welcome ceremony, it's not even reception, I can't even call it that. In this room, when they come in, they bring their suitcases in, there's a few, the council president will be on vacation, so we'll ask the vice president of the council to say a few words of welcome to them. There's some people from the schools who will speak, and then they speak, and then they get off to their hosts, to their hosts' homes. And so, they're only here until Sunday, and Andy is much more familiar with the group. He's been doing it for a number of years, and actually has traveled to Japan. So, he may want to add more to that. Our HR director, I think you've all met, Evelyn Rivera Riffenberg, started today, and she's come in and is meeting with all department heads and lots of staff. In my report, I mention the town of Leverett seeking to have an extension of their water, of the town of Amherst water line into the town of Leverett. This is an issue that's been going on for over a decade, where some of homes, half, roughly about a half a dozen homes in Leverett had their wells contaminated purportedly from the landfill in Leverett. So, they're looking at different ways to fix the problem. They've been buying these homes bottled water for a long time, and so they're looking at different options. One of the options is to extend our water line on East Leverett Road into Leverett. That would, if that were to come to fruition, if that's, for that to be considered, the council would need to approve it, both because you are the water and sewer commissioners, and you're the keeper of the public way, and you have to approve intermunicipal agreements. So, you've got three shots at this, and you can say, and they would need to have yes, 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 for this to happen. They're not sure, I talked with one of the representatives, one of the select board members from Leverett on Sunday, they're still not sure what direction they're going in. They're hoping to get some resolution in the town of Leverett at their annual meeting this May. But again, just not, they're looking at different options in terms of potentially taking the houses, or whatever other options they're exploring. What our posture has been is that we've been working with them with out-incurring costs to the town of Amherst, but providing them any technical advice or engineering advice that we can offer them. They've engaged an engineering firm to start to investigate how much it would cost them, and what the barriers are to extending our water line. You might say, well, wait a minute, do we have enough water to give them? From DPW's point of view, six houses is kind of miniscule compared to a lot of other things that are proposed in town, so, and if we can, with the agreement, we can limit it to the number of houses who would make connections. Station Road Bridge, we've received comments back from the State Department of Transportation. They had some minor things that they've identified. They had a couple more substantive things. We have a meeting tomorrow, I'm not, but there is a meeting tomorrow with our engineers to review all of the changes that they have requested. And that project, we're going to keep moving it forward, and hope that we still have our schedule. I will know more after tomorrow's meeting as to whether we can stay on schedule or not. And that is my report.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Questions? Mandy Jo?
I have one about Station Road, and one about Groff Park, which you didn't mention. I'll start with Station Road. So, my understanding is, the bid documents have not gone out then, so we still think we can meet the April 17th deadline? It seems implausible to me, but I'm not an engineer.
Right. So, they're exploring other means of securing the bridge, and that might tighten up the schedule a little bit, so.
And Groff Park, yay, is what I'm, one thing I want to say is, I'm thrilled to see that bids came in, and they're within the budget. I'm curious what the plan for Mill Lane is when Groff Park has a brand-new playground in Splash Park, with Mill Lane currently right now as bad of a moonscape as I've ever seen it in the last five months, that it's practically undrivable, and will swallow your car. And to put a new playground and water park in there, and keep a road, an access road, undrivable for two large developments that live on the other side of that road, what's our plan for making that accessible without ruining cars?
So, we will be bringing, or sending to you a pavement plan for, in a relatively short period of time. And I don't know where Mill Lane is on that. Typically, what we have been doing with our pavement money, which is, we know we have a lot of needs, and not enough money to meet all those needs, and that Mill Lane is not one of those that gets the highest priority, because we try to fix the roads that are already in bad shape.
It's in horrible shape.
Yes. But it's unpaved, and people know it's unpaved.
I just, Paul knows, I sent him this question among others. So, as we have road plans, there is a hierarchy of what we think we're doing, when, and where. Is there a point at which people would be able to see it? And then, the other question related to that, in this past year, or the current year, where you made a big effort to put more money into roads, did that come with, if we spend $900,000, we get this far over the course of a year? So, you have a kind of a standard that we'll get this many miles done, or, you know, so you can look backwards and say, did we do it? And you can look forward and say, what are we thinking of doing?
Sure. Yes, and it's not an exact science, as you can imagine, because when you go out to bid, and it's a competitive world, you may get fewer than you anticipate. What this, what the plan does is estimates how much, how many roads we can pave, puts that on a calendar, and, and sort of, over five years. And we can start to look at that, and, but it moves, like any plan. It's a budget, it's a forecast, but it's not like you're locked in place. There might be a road that blows up during the winter, and we have to reprioritize that. But at least people can see, where am I, generally, over that five-year plan? And that's a, by road, by, by location.
Are there other questions? Yes, Mark Darcy?
I don't have a question, just a comment. I know this wasn't in your report, but I attended the municipal vulnerability preparedness workshop today, and I'm going tomorrow, and just wanted to say that it seemed like incredibly well-run, effective. It was very exciting to see all the different town staff, and sustainability people that were from the different institutions like UMass, and Amherst College, and some of them I was meeting for the first time today. But just wanted to commend you for that fantastic process that's going forward.
I'll say thank you, but just because I had nothing to do with it. It was all, Stephanie Chicorello was really the owner of that, and made that happen.
Thank you. Yes, Sarah?
So, I wanted to say, as someone who's been a resident of Meadow Street for 30 years, I just want to say kudos to everyone who planned fabulous things for UMass students to attend that they were excited about. I will tell you that usually, we sit on the front porch and watch the parade. This is happy, happy students, and the quietest on Meadow Street that I have seen in 30 years, so amazing. The other thing I wanted to say is, Chair of OCA, is that we have had the privilege to work with town staff quite a bit in these past seven weeks, and I'm so impressed by them, and I'm so appreciative of everything they've done to support us. So, most definitely, we will, I will invite the community participation officers to come, just give them some ideas for meetings. And we really look forward to having them with us.
Thank you. And in terms of Meadow Street, one of the things that the police reported was that the biggest challenge they had on, in North Amherst, was the police officers, was boredom, because there wasn't anything going on. And at one point, yeah, so that was.
I want to echo, yeah, I mean, it was so quiet. It was kind of creepy.
Okay. Yes, Alyssa?
I wanted to say something about RAC, based on a conversation I had with the town manager earlier this evening, since we got to meet the RAC members, which was great. Thank you for bringing them in. I'm glad two of the three could make the time, and hopefully, we'll get to meet Ms. Dennis soon, is that just from an OCA point of view, one of the things we wanted to be able to eventually explain to you when we brought forward candidates to be appointed to various things, that we wanted to be able to explain where the RAC fit into the process. And it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it has been determined that the RAC will not be seeing individual applications from applicants, and so they will not be serving in that way to evaluate and select. They will not be looking at names of people. And they will be subject to open meeting law, so they will have posted meetings where they can, where they talk about things that they said they were going to talk about tonight. So, just so that you're remembering that, so that when we bring you that whole long process of what we used, that's where they're fitting into it as we understand it right now.
Paul?
Yes. So, the presumption is that the residents advisory committee is a public body, is subject to the open meeting law. Again, I've had individual conversations with the three, but they have not met as a committee yet. And so, one of the conversations to have with them is how they can best help with the process. And part of that might be individually being involved, and interviewing people, because that's something that is available. It could be consulting with me, and also holding me accountable to standards that the charter has put in about diversity and qualifications. And so, they can hold on to those and review those as well. So, there's, as I said earlier, I think it's a work in progress. I think we're really privileged to have really quality people. On both, you met the Board of License Commissioners, there are four of the five, and they're all really very talented people. But more than that, a lot have not been involved in town government before, which is unusual typically for a lot of our volunteers. And it's kind of exciting, because they And it's kind of exciting because they have a lot of energy coming in, they're excited by the new form of government and want to be involved. And so, again, the residents advisory committee, I'm anxious to have the conversation with the three of them as a group and see how they perceive their role as well.
Okay. Further questions, comments? We are moving on town council comments, and we have two items that we have sent, that I sent out to you. One was the draft goals of the council, and the other was with the draft value statement. Along with the draft goals in your packet tonight, there was also a direct transcript of the, the butcher paper, the notes that we took during the, our retreat. And then, my first, and I do mean first, and very draft, attempt to try to turn those goals into some kind of plan, if you will, statement of goals and then plan. I did receive comments, but only from three counselors, and so I really don't know that we have a lot that we can do with that sitting here tonight, besides the fact that we would be wordsmithing, and that doesn't seem very useful. On the value statement, Shalini, I'm going to leave you to talk about that at this time.
So, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to share this document. I'm kind of excited about it, and it's something we've all been working on. It's the values that we discussed at three different, at these two different points of time. One was our first workshop with Stan Rosenberg, and where we shared some do's and don'ts that we want to see happen in our town council. And the second was the retreat. And then I also looked at the document, the charter commission's values, what did they value? And so, I kind of looked at these three documents, and then I looked at several other towns of the value statements that they have, and put together, combined all of this. And the purpose of doing this is really to create a shared vision of what's most important to us as a town and as a town council. And so, it sets the guidelines for how we run our meetings and how we interact with each other, and kind of set the tone for the culture in town as well. So, that's kind of the main purpose of creating a document like this. And so, a couple of reasons why, in addition, that I think there, it's important to have a document like this is, you know, when we're running our meetings or making decisions, that we all have a shared set of values, and they're not competing or inconsistent with each other. For example, you know, if we have fiscal responsibility as a value, as a town council, but fiscal responsibility can mean different things to different people, so just having a common, a collective vision of what that looks like. And so, just, so that's one reason. The other is, it would set the tone for our meetings and district meetings as well, like we talked about, balance being, for example, one of the things that has come up, you know, as we're respecting the boundaries of the town staff, but I think the same applies to all of us. You know, so I put, I stuck in that value, and it was sort of mentioned in the retreat, the idea of balance. But I think it's important for us to be sustainable in the long run and to make good decisions that if it's not important, we should not meet on weekends, for example. You know, so things like this could then create the boundaries, or where we feel we're at crossroads, then we can, you know, this document can provide us guidance that are we indeed true to the values that we put together. So, we could, different ways we can use it, and all of this is open to, of course, discussion. And so, I invite everyone to share their, I mean, I don't know how we want to proceed with this, but I think what would be helpful is to see what values or what guidelines would help all of us feel safe, would help us feel productive in our meetings, and so we can then include those and also think of how we're running our district meetings, because I think the same guidelines would also be helpful in running our meetings. I think that's about it.
So, here are, here are the options. One is, we could sit here and we could discuss the goals, we could also discuss the value statement. Another option is, we in fact do create an ad hoc committee to work on these and bring them back. And those are really the two options, as I see it.
This could be part of the rules committee, because we are already writing the rules, and I was actually sort of in charge of making sure that, I mean, sort of having sort of an introductory statement in the rules document, that these are the values which are guiding us in how we are writing the rules.
That would be for the values part of it.
Yeah.
My only hesitation is, how much more can the rules committee take on and meet their deadline? Alyssa.
We were already doing this section, so if you hadn't brought it forward now, we would have been doing it in time for June 3. This was one of our sections. The one thing I do want to mention associated with that, though, is that if people have input, obviously, I think the best thing to do is for them to write directly to Shalini, and then we will, we will take that into account, because we have not had a chance to discuss this topic yet at rules, and of course, we keep adding things to our agenda, as you indicated. I will say, just in terms of, for example, I'm hesitant to say this, because obviously it's a public meeting, but under integrity, it says avoidance of big-money politics. That just clangs really hard to me against all the other things we're saying, and so maybe what we're talking about, for example, is a perception that we're influenced by big-money politics, for example. And the whole balance thing, obviously, I much prefer imbalance, and so clearly, I don't agree with any of those statements. But everything else I really like. And so, I'm hoping that rule, what I'm perceiving is that rules would not bring this back to you necessarily immediately, although we could, just as we've brought some other trial sorts of things to do. If we can make significant progress on this, say, on Wednesday, after we do the other two priorities we have to do that you referred to us, but we had always intended this was going to be kind of the preface to our rules document.
Okay. So, the idea then, in this case, is this would just, people, first of all, would provide Shalini individually, not in group, any feedback on the town values and guidelines, and that would then be incorporated into the rules or procedure committee. Is there any further discussion about that piece? That does not require a motion. Okay? All right. On the goals, I personally feel that I need some additional assistance on this. I would, I could continue to do that by having you comment to me individually, or I could do that by having a very small working group, otherwise known as an ad hoc committee. And the reason I, this is important, is because these need to be meshed then with the goals set by the select board and put together as it relates to the evaluation of the annual review of the town manager, all of which has to take place and be completed by the month of August. So, yes.
Just a question, what, what will be the final product here, and where will it reside? I mean, what is?
The, interesting, I'm taking a play, a page out of the select book in the past, select board in the past. So, they would establish goals, Andy and Alyssa, and for, of the select board, and then those would be incorporated into the town manager's goals. Now, interestingly, the town manager has performed his duties for essentially five months under the select board, but seven months under us. But the question is, based on what goals? And at some point, you know, you have to evaluate someone against something. So, it would be a public document, and it, and then the other piece that I find important about goals, it's a measure of us. It's our statement to the community, this is what we plan to accomplish this year, and whether we accomplish it or not. So, I see two purposes, and I see it as a very public statement. Alyssa.
If I could just clarify a little bit about the select board's practice. So, the select board was part of the executive, the select board did not have its own separate goals. The select board had goals for the town manager to accomplish, because he was the one who could implement the things that we wanted to have done. He is working under the select board goals, we can't just change him to the town council goals next week, because he's been working under those goals all this time. But we need to be thinking this through, so that, I mean, right now, the evaluation document would be based on the goals that were established for him in the fall. But you want to have the next document ready, and if you do want separate, since you're talking about now about two separate branches, you do want to have two separate sets of goals, then obviously, as you say, they need to mesh. That's all, that's critically important. But there was not, there were not two separate sets of goals in the past. They were purely goals for the town manager, and those goals were put on a chart, which you can read at your leisure, on the old select board page, as to how we evaluated those goals.
Thank you. Yes, George.
What I'm hearing correctly, I think, from you is that if we just sent you comments, some of us have done that, some of us haven't, that still kind of leaves the burden on you. You, what I'm hearing is you might like some help with this, so an ad hoc committee would be very useful to you personally and working through this. Am I hearing that correctly, or?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Then I would think that would be a good way to go.
Okay. And to do that formally would be to form an ad hoc committee? So, you're making a motion?
We would like a motion to form an ad hoc committee to assist you in the formation of these goals, and, yes.
Is there a second? Sarah? Further discussion?
How many members?
Maximum five, unless you want to have committees of the whole. Any further conversation on that? All those in favor of the motion? Thank you, it's unanimous. Now, I want to see who, the people who would like to work with me on this, raise your hands. Sarah, Evan. Okay, I got more than I need, unless it's a committee of six.
Keep your thoughts, Sarah.
It can be, it can be a committee of six, one, because I'm, I'm one of them. Okay, so it's Sarah?
Six is scheduling, right?
Okay. Sarah, Kathy, George, and Pat, and myself. Okay? Thank you. I appreciate that. That does not mean that we don't welcome the comments from all the rest of you. We do want them, okay? Please provide those to me directly and individually. Any further conversations on either of those? I asked that group to stay, so we can see if we can find a time to meet in the very near future. Future agenda items, we are trying our very best to get as much information out to you today. You did see the very aggressive calendar for both the regional school budget and the regular budget, so that that gives you a sense of what's coming up. But in addition to that, on March 18th, we will be hearing from the schools, from the elementary schools, on the MSBA application to, for the statement of interest. And we will also be looking at the East Street School Affordable Housing Project. We will probably then, on April 1st, do both of those again, and the reason being is that the first is when we will take the vote for the MSBA. It is unclear whether we'll be ready to take the vote on the East Street School Affordable Housing, but since it involves the transfer of land, we need to have it come before us twice before we vote on it. Okay? And then, I want to ask for additional items, and I'm going to start by adding one, for which I'm going to ask Counselor Brewer, Alyssa, to be part of helping us be educated on the issue of marijuana.
Marijuana?
And how it relates to the town of Amherst.
So, in the top of June?
Yeah, June. Maybe May. Are there other issues? Yes, Kathy.
Okay, and I wasn't sure when we would want to do this, but at the very beginning, we talked about this reforming committees, what are we doing? And then there was an issue of liaisons with others.
We talked about that last week, we referred the issue of liaisons to.
It's on our posted list of topics for tomorrow, for tomorrow night.
Okay.
Okay, and then that would be, come back then?
That would come back with a recommendation, and then we'll deal with liaisons.
Okay. And then the second one is this discussion we had tonight about bus routes and transportation. I just, what I'd like to know, and maybe it'll come up in finance, is where and how bus routes, paying money decisions get made. So, I understood we're going to get more information back, but I think we were, we were being presented with something that if we don't act soon, the opportunity to act won't be there, and I just don't quite understand what the implications are. So, maybe we can bring, do that first in finance, if it's a money issue, so just not quite grappling how we do it, since we don't really have a transportation subcommittee or, you know, a lia, and TAC doesn't deal with, I asked, they don't usually deal with bus routes? You know, they, you know, so the transportation advisory, so just trying to figure out where.
Right. So, first of all, Mr. Slaughter, Doug Slaughter, has agreed to look into the proposal that Bob Cousner brought forward, Rob Cousner, and I will take it up with the town manager and with Paul, with Doug, to determine how we bring that back. It does also have a question that then blends into our budget, which we can discuss how that happens in finance committee. Any further question on that, Paul? Okay. Other issues before the council that you would like to have come before the council? Yes, Darcy.
One issue that I think has come up recently, and I think that we, at least I overlooked as we were approving different of our charges for committees of the council, was just the issue of whether or not the new committees have the ability to, to decide matters on their own, decide policy, as opposed to coming back to the council with recommendations for action, for action items. So, I would really appreciate kind of revisiting some of the committee charges, just to, to see if they have that ability, especially the GOL committee, and we talked about it today in OCA also. And so, that just is really important to me. I feel like there are issues that I would like to be involved in the decision-making on. I think my constituents have, you know, they elected me to have a voice in some of these major policy decisions that we're making now. And I would like to see a lot of those decisions made on the council level, as opposed to in the committees of the town council. I think it's, you know, great that, that those committees are able to do all the work to, to be able to present a recommendation to the council, but I think all of us should be able to be involved in the decision-making in a lot of these issues. So, I would kind of like to see that as an agenda item.
So, it's really looking at our standing committees, their role, their charges, their role, and their, at what point they bring what forward to the council.
Right.
Fine. I'm, I'm totally hearing that. Yes, Sarah.
So, I totally understand that, and I do agree with that on the whole. I guess one thing that OCA was struggling with is, you know, when you, when, maybe we could look at what information the town council as a whole would like to see when a committee brings their decision in front of all of us, just in the fact that, so that we're ans- brings their decision in front of all of us, just in the fact that, so that we're answering pertinent questions, and that of course, if the town council says, I think this is terrible, you've got to go back, at least we can have a format of answering very succinct questions so that we're not then going back and debating something that the particular committees have already gone through.
So let me just state one very clear thing. All standing committees only bring forward recommendations to the council. They don't bring forward decisions. It's the council's prerogative to vote and decide. So I happened to be at the meeting where this came up earlier today, and it was around the issue that this group has spent enormous amount of effort on, which is the issue of how to go about selecting people to be recommended for committees. And it's leading to a body of practice that this committee will be putting into place. But I personally feel it's important for the council to understand what that practice looks like, because at times, there may be other bodies or other collections of the council that will have to follow similar practice. So, but we can discuss that as this whole agenda item. I do ask each of the standing committees, of which there are only at this point three, to look at your charges and see if there's any other tweaking on your charges. Yes?
Right, I think, I hear what Darcy's saying. And so one of the things I was going to say is, a lot of, at least in terms of the two committees, Iser Van and OCA and GOL, we're still sort of figuring out our footing and how we operate, and to some extent, who we are. And so perhaps this is a bigger discussion that the council should have in July, because the budget's going to consume us for the next two months, right? But also that will have given us six months as committees to sort of get our bearings, figure out who we are, and then we can sort of have a discussion of the council of, are these committees operating the way we intended them to when we created them in December? Do the committees feel like they have what they need to operate? And maybe that's a time for committees to bring forth proposals. It seems like it'd be good to have it as like a holistic discussion of the council of, all right, we set this structure up, it's been seven months, how is it going? But also recognizing that the next few months are very busy, and committees are still figuring out themselves. And so we should have, we need to let them mature first before we kind of reevaluate.
There may be some things that we want to bring up earlier than that. But Darcy?
I would just say that I feel like right now is the time when we're making these major decisions in all the different committees. And we're making the big policy, hopefully, recommendations about how we're going to work as a council. So I actually would disagree with Evan on that because I think that time is of the essence. We need to be looking at what we're doing right now, because this is when all the big decisions are being made. They'll all be made by July.
I...
A lot of them.
I hear that, and we'll take it under consideration when we look as when to put this on the agenda. It may be a two-staged conversation, one that says, are there some tweaking now, and another one down the road that says, what else do we need to do? Somebody's decided the light should go out?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a hint. Is there any other, any other issues, additional agenda items, et cetera? I noticed we didn't take a poll tonight.
I know. I've seen it. I know.
All right. There are no other topics. Are there any other counselor comments at this time? Darcy?
I just have one more. I just wanted to say that I, you know, I was going to make a comment about transparency and problems with it, but I've been very pleased to find out that the different committees are going to be meeting in this room.
Yes.
And the president informed me, or the OCA committee today, that there's going to be some kind of provision for automatic videotaping in here. So that's a stride forward.
We're working on it. Still working the kinks out, but getting there. Yes. By the way, there are other groups that like to meet here, but we have priority. Okay? Or so I'm told. Any other questions or comments from the counselor? I don't have any topics that were not anticipated. I'm sure there's many, but I'm not going to bring them up. No executive session? Yes?
Today, I attended the hearing in this room of the Fort River School Committee. And I was the only council member, and I was one of two people who weren't part of the committee. It was interesting, and I did learn something because for me, when I see a picture, and I don't always understand what they're saying, they explained it, and I learned a lot.
This is for the Fort River?
Feasibility.
Feasibility. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So the second, but parents have their kids at home. That, yes, there were children in attendance. Yes.
So there were more than two? There were more than two, it's just that they weren't a voting age.
They all had hair on.
Okay. All right. Are there any other comments, observations, during your motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Pat? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.